Thank you. councillors, Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dance, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Apologies. Are there any apologies?
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Hammond will be absent today and I move that she be granted a leave of absence from the meeting. Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that councillor Hammond be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. I wish to advise that councillor Cook and councillor Sri Ranganathan will be absent from today's meeting and move that...
Please.
...move that they be granted a leave of absence.
A second. Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Strunk that councillors Cook and Sri Ranganathan be granted leaves of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, motion of condolence, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move the following condolence motion. The city of Brisbane marks with sadness the extreme damage and loss of life caused to the communities in New Zealand, particularly in our sister city of Auckland, by Cyclone Gabriel. We support the recent move by the federal government to deploy a team of helpers to aid in the recovery and we mourn those who have lost loved ones and we wish them every success in their rebuilding efforts.
Seconded. Thank you. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by councillor Cassidy that the city of Brisbane marks with sadness the extreme damage and loss of life caused to communities in New Zealand, particularly our sister city Auckland, by Cyclone Gabriel. We support the recent move by the federal government to deploy a team of helpers to aid in the recovery. We mourn with those who have lost loved ones and we wish them every success in their rebuilding efforts. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. It's heartbreaking that two meetings in a row have started with condolence motions about disasters that are happening all around the world. Last week about the earthquake in Turkey and Syria and this week about the devastation that's been caused in New Zealand and particularly our sister city Auckland. New Zealand, as one of our closest, well, our closest neighbour and a country that we feel such great affinity towards, and also the home of our sister city Auckland, has been hit by a double whammy. In recent weeks, they were hit with devastating flooding and in fact, some of the worst flooding that they have seen in 200 years, followed up now by the impacts of Cyclone Gabriel. With Cyclone Gabriel starting off the coast of Queensland, obviously it was something we were all concerned about, but I don't think we expected that it would head towards New Zealand. In New Zealand, one of their top priorities for, I guess, disaster preparedness is the response to earthquake. Not necessarily the response to cyclones or flooding. It is quite unusual for this to happen, but it is something that particularly us here in Brisbane and in Queensland feel a particular affinity to because of what we have as a state been through over many years. Right now Auckland remains in a state of emergency and their emergency services are in overdrive, working to recover from one of their biggest combinations of natural disasters in history. There have been 11 known deaths from this cyclone, but there is a serious risk that this number will increase significantly. There are many people, in fact even thousands of people, who are still unaccounted for and have not been able to be contacted at this point in time. This number has dropped from 6,500, so there is some minor good news in that. In addition to these figures, there are 28,000 homes without power and many people, as I said, uncontactable because telecommunications towers are out of action. And so this, you can just imagine the disaster striking, but then loved ones not being able to get in touch with each other, many of them in Brisbane or in Queensland who don't know what has happened to their relatives or friends, family, because they are not contactable. One of the biggest struggles at the moment is access in terms of some of the communities. Roads in and out are blocked and that makes it very difficult to carry out recovery efforts, including simple things like getting clean drinking water and food through to some of those impacted communities. We saw it here in Brisbane a year ago where supplies had to be delivered by chopper to certain parts of the city and lack of access is a big challenge in New Zealand at the moment. It's one of the reasons why the federal government has stepped up and deployed a team of Australians to help with efforts on the ground, including looking for those people who are missing. Some of these teams are also deployed in the control centre so that information can be relayed and resources can be appropriately directed. Earlier this month, I wrote to Mayor Brown to convey that Auckland is in Brisbane's thoughts and that was following the flooding that happened. So this was the earlier disaster they had and that we stand ready to help them should they need it and we look forward to advice on the type of help that they need from us. So now obviously the situation has worsened, not only with floods, but then with the cyclone and the damage that that's caused. Our CEO has also reached out to the Auckland council CEO to restate our offer of assistance and so we do stand ready to help. Now, we don't know what that help might entail, but we certainly stand ready in whatever way is required of us to step up on behalf of our brothers and sisters in New Zealand and our sister city of Auckland. We do have the people of Auckland and New Zealand on our thoughts. We wish them every success in recovering from this tragedy and we do stand ready to help in whatever way is necessary.
Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. I rise today to second this motion and on behalf of my team and the communities we represent, extend our deepest condolences to those who have been affected by Cyclone Gabriel and the ongoing severe weather which has caused significant damage across New Zealand, in particular the north and east coasts of the North Island. As we know, Brisbane is home to a large population of New Zealanders, over 100,000 in fact, and I'd like to extend our thoughts to those in our city who would no doubt be worried about their whanau back home. 11 people have tragically lost their lives so far, thousands remain unaccounted for and hundreds of thousands left without power. People have lost their homes and businesses, many communities have been completely cut off, both virtually and physically, as phone networks and road access have been disrupted. The cyclone comes on the heels of that devastating flooding that our sister city Auckland experienced and across the North Island more broadly recently. I'd like to acknowledge the fast action of the Australian government in sending our own emergency responders to assist in the disaster and, as I said, in reference to those unfolding events in Turkey and Syria last week, as the largest local government in Australia, we can and should lead the way in terms of offering support and do appreciate what the Lord Mayor has said in terms of that offer that has been extended to New Zealand. So we would like to see everything done that possibly can be in terms of physical support and financial support if that's appropriate. Once again, I'd like to send our deepest condolences to those who have been affected by this terrible tragedy across the ditch.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise just briefly to speak on the condolence motion and pass on my condolences to the families of those who have lost loved ones in New Zealand. We know only too well in Brisbane the impacts of natural disasters and how devastating they are for communities. And New Zealand is such a beautiful country. It's suffered a lot. You know, there's terrible earthquakes in Christchurch, you know, quite a few years ago now, but what we've seen with the flooding and the cyclone impacts has been horrific. I'm very pleased to hear that we have offered practical support to New Zealand. I would have thought perhaps some financial support would be worthwhile there, but perhaps that will come in due course. But I hope that we will offer whatever support we can, whether that's with cleanup crews or, you know, just extra bodies to help relieve those who are cleaning up. So I'd like to add my support to the motion of condolence and let everybody here in our community in Brisbane know that we're thinking of those who have lost loved ones or are missing loved ones or are a long way away from them.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak to the condolence motion. Last week I was in New Zealand and I witnessed firsthand the devastation caused by Cyclone Gabriel. For those who are unaware, my father passed away unexpectedly last, on the 7th of February and I was able to get a flight out with my family the next day to see him. Anyway, I had planned to be back for the following chambers, the 14th, because I absolutely look forward to spending Valentine's Day with you all. Unfortunately Cyclone Gabriel hit and all flights out were cancelled. So I was still in New Zealand when it was all happening. There was lots of rain, there was lots of wind. It did hit the North Island uppermost region on the 12th and it tracked down the east coast. So this natural disaster has infected widespread devastation like nothing ever seen in New Zealand in living memory. The Lord Mayor has mentioned earthquakes and as a child growing up in New Zealand, I was experienced many earthquakes. I don't know if any of you here have been in one. It's kind of freaky actually. I remember looking out the window and the land literally does undulate as an earthquake's coming through. Obviously flash flooding and landslides have resulted from this major event, but we will not know the true impact on our friends across the ditch and my fellow countrymen for many weeks, if not months. I note with great sadness that police are reporting that thousands of people remain uncontactable with great concerns for their safety. Hundreds of people have been rescued, many by helicopters, including some have had to take refuge on the roofs of buildings. 11 people have been confirmed dead. The first death reported was a volunteer, what we would consider the opposite, the equivalent of SES. And while in New Zealand, we actually, obviously the news was covering a lot of this and we heard the heartbreaking story of a young couple who were house-sitting for friends. The house was built on higher ground than normal, but the water's continued to rise. The young couple moved to the top of the kitchen benches. The water still continued to rise, so the boyfriend made the decision to punch through the kitchen ceiling to get to the roof core space. As he was reaching for his girlfriend's hand to assist her into the roof, a fast-moving shipping container smashed into the house and the girlfriend was lost. The owners of the house spoke of their complete devastation at this tragedy. In Brisbane, across the state and country, we're no stranger to natural disasters, but this does not make it easier to bear. This loss of lives, homes and property is devastating and will take a generation to recover from. I would like to commend the federal government for their quick action to send aid to help in the rescue and recovery of our neighbours in need and I'm very aware that the Lord Mayor is also on standby to send whatever is also required. We are encouraging, there has been a Red Cross New Zealand Disaster Fund set up, so if people do want to give any financial support of any kind, they can do that through the Red Cross, which as we know is a reputable organisation to support people. And they are now supporting people across the country who've been affected by Cyclone Gabriel, as well as the Tamaki Makakaur Auckland and Northern flooding. Our hearts go out for the tragic loss of life, the unthinkable tragedy that's happened. And of course, I'm not sure if you're aware, but there was another earthquake a couple of days later, which is where a lot of my family live. And our thoughts and prayers are with the people of New Zealand. Can I finish by saying kia kaha whanau? Thank you.
Lord Mayor. No further speakers? I now move the motion of condolence. All in favour, please say aye. Any to the contrary, the ayes have it. May I have confirmation of minutes, please?
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,700th meeting held on Tuesday the 14th of February 2023 be received, taken as read and confirmed. Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4,700th meeting of council held on the 14th of February 2023 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we have a public participant this morning and a call on Mr Shaun Walsh, who would like to address the chamber on the community benefits of delivering stages one and two of the Murray Re Recreation Reserve International Cycle Park project. Mr Walsh, Billy is showing you to your chair and microphone. You can stand or sit depending on your preference and you have five minutes when the mic is turned on. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in.
Mr Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors, thank you for the opportunity to address the council on the Brisbane International Cycle Park project at the Murray Re Recreation Reserve. While I'm the current secretary of Belmaral Cycling Club, I'm really here because I love cycling and I love Brisbane. I grew up in Brisbane, I'm a lifelong cyclist and sports club volunteer and I'm the father of two competitive cyclists who learned to ride their bikes at Murray Re. I applaud the council on the exceptional vision of providing a single precinct for all levels of wheel sport, with children learning to ride skate and scooter at the Learn to Ride course in safety, tweens and teens developing skills at the BMX Pump Track, Skateboard Park and Mountain Bike Skills Park, roller speed skating enthusiasts using a world-class speed track, recreational and competitive cyclists and triathletes on the Criterion Track and the ability to host local, state, national and international events for skating and cycling. What's truly unique here is catering for all the levels, from beginners through to professional riders, and having so many wheel sports disciplines and purposes co-located, allowing ordinary residents to ride at the location that can host international events. The opportunity to introduce more Brisbane kids to different types of sport and develop them from beginners through to competitive athletes will be revolutionary. There'll be a bigger pipeline of athletes and they're more likely to find the right discipline. We already see cross-discipline crossover three kilometres away at Chandler where BMX and track cycling sit side by side. And I'm reminded that you can't be what you don't see. All of the other infrastructure, like the outer circulation track, the gardens and picnic areas, support the cross-fertilisation of activity and minimise conflict between users. There's nothing else like this in Brisbane or nationally. It's a generational legacy project. We thank the Lord Mayor and council for the significant investment and commitment required to deliver such a transformational project. But on behalf of the Brisbane cycling community, I urge council to bring forward funding for the complete vision. In my opinion, the site lighting will be the best single investment at the site. It brings economic returns by allowing competitions to be held during the prime time of early evening, maximising opportunities for an audience at the site and on television. This site will host showcase competitions during major events such as the Brisbane Cycling Festival, attracting investment, visitors and profile for the facility and for the city. A reliable, all-gear, day-night training facility strengthens the case for individual athletes and teams to implement training bases and camps in Brisbane. Why is the Old Cycling Road and Track High Performance Unit still in Adelaide with the Olympics to be hosted in Brisbane? Lighting increases the available hours the track can be used for individuals and groups. It improves access and safety. It's particularly useful for the heat of summer and the early morning and evening darkness of winter. Like learning to swim, everyone should learn to ride a bike. It's an important safety skill. Getting people comfortable and safe on bikes is key for the city's transport policy. The Learn to Ride course, BMX Pump Track and Mountain Bike Skills course will immediately improve the attractiveness of the park for families and young people. The recently opened council facilities at Dara and McGregor have already proven to be very popular. Having all these facilities co-located means there's a breadth of activity to suit more people and you're more likely to try something new. Parents will be comfortable with the environment and will be able to see and supervise a natural progression for their child. During the 12 to 18 months that it will take to redevelop Murray Re, Brisbane will lose half of its capacity for weekly racing, junior training and major closed-road cycle races, making it geographically impractical for some Brisbane residents to race regularly. The park closure will impact on us and the many other users of Murray Re. So we'd like to minimise this displacement from the site. The possibility of a second closure at the park for stage two works would actually be counterproductive. There is no doubt the completed project will provide the people of Greater Brisbane with a significant legacy as we prepare for the Olympic and Paralympic Games and will contribute to council's Brisbane vision 2031 for an active, healthy city, a friendly, safe city and a new world city. I urge council to bring forward funding to concurrently deliver the complete vision, especially the lighting, to limit the time of displacement from the site.
Thank you. Mr Walsh, your time has expired. Thank you. Is there a civic cabinet chair responding? Councillor Davis.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you very much, Mr Walsh, for coming in today. Your passion for this project is palpable and it's only matched, I think, by our administration and in particular councillor Lisa Atwood, who I understand you've had a number of conversations with in the lead-up to the final concept plan that was delivered last year. I did have the opportunity to visit the site probably about eight or 10 months ago with councillor Atwood and it's going to be a wonderful, wonderful addition to the offering for those that do enjoy cycle sports. And I completely understand your enthusiasm to have both stages one and two brought through early, but we made it quite clear from the beginning that the important element that needed to be done first was around the Criterion Track and making that of international standard and that is certainly going ahead. The change rooms and the clubhouse and also having that proper entrance coming in. What I would say is that phase two, although it wasn't explicit in the phase two outline, we could consider lighting as part of that, but like most things, we have to be aware of budget across all areas of council. This is an exciting project in the lead-up to 2032 and we look forward to continuing this wonderful dialogue that we've got with your club as we move forward and deliver this great project. Thank you, Mr Walsh.
Thanks councillor Davis. Thank you, Mr Walsh, for coming in. Billy will show you out. Thank you very much for coming in. Councillor's question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a civic cabinet chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Mackay.
Thanks Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, it is nearing one year to the anniversary of the 2022 February floods. Last year, the council you lead executed the biggest cleanup this city has ever seen. Can you please update the chamber on the extent of this cleanup, including how the Shrima council has worked hard to rebuild and recover our city from the 2022 floods?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Mackay for the question. And I know that your ward, councillor Mackay, was one of the many wards right across the city that was impacted heavily. And as I stand here today and we look back and it's 12 months from the flood, I also reflect on the fact that there are a number of us in this chamber who were here for the 2011 flood as well. And little did we think that there would be two floods in such a relatively short period of time. In reflecting on the past 12 months, the main thing that I want to say is to express my gratitude and that of all of us in the chamber for the work that the council officers have done in the past 12 months to help our city first in the cleanup, but then in the recovery, the rebuilding, the repair and recovery process. This is an event that has impacted Brisbane on a scale never seen before. And in 2011, we knew that less than 100 suburbs were impacted by flood, whereas this time in 2022, 170 suburbs out of 190 suburbs in Brisbane were impacted. So virtually every suburb in the city in some way was impacted. And with the damage and debris and the cleanup effort spread out over such a wide area, it required first of all Brisbane's biggest ever cleanup and we saw a massive effort put in straight away as soon as the floodwaters resided to do that cleanup. All up, more than 75,000 tonnes of flood waste were collected, 3,357 streets were cleared. Also, straight away and very early, we stepped in to provide financial support, both through ratepayers and to clubs. There was around $20 million of support injected very quickly, whether it was $15 million to the community groups through their initial cleanup payment or almost $5 million in rates relief for impacted properties as well. I stand in awe of the work that those officers have done. Now, that cleanup obviously progressed at an incredible scale, as fast as possible, but then since then, there's been a lot of other work that's had to be done as well through the repair and then the rebuilding process. Now, some of those assets across the city could be repaired relatively quickly and put back into action again, but others took much more significant work. And some of them required complete redesign of assets and facilities. One of those such cases is the Kedron Brook Bike Way, where it was actually not possible to build back the bike way as it was because the creek had moved entirely. There was no land there where there was land before. And so it required not only a slab of concrete to be put in, it required the creation of massive embankment works, land stabilisation works and also design and planning work to make sure that what is built back is built back more resiliently. I can report that after the flood, we did an independent review by former governor Paul De Jersey. We have 87% of those actions now complete from the recommendations and five actions that are still in progress out of the actions. So 33 complete, five in progress. In terms of our own flood response action plan, which was not the De Jersey review, but went over and above that, we also have 37 action items complete and there are 19 in progress as well. Significant work has been done. That progress continues. That progress, to just focus on the scale of it, we had 367 kilometres of flood-impacted drains that needed to be inspected and then where necessary cleaned. We had 124 sets of traffic lights that were impacted and put out of action and needed to be put back as quickly as possible. We have filled a record number of potholes in the past 12 months. In fact, 117,332 potholes filled since the flood. There were 293 flood-impacted playgrounds that have reopened. 44 barbecues were impacted by flooding and have been, all of them have been brought back into service. 863 flood-impacted parks were cleaned and reopened, including 44 dog-off-leash areas. 21 community facilities have been restored, including seven field renovations. 170 kilometres of bike ways were cleaned and reopened and restored.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor on behalf of Stafford resident Joe Woolley. And this is the question. Last week in council, the Lord Mayor called our genuine community campaign fake, which insulted not only me, but the 900 local residents who signed our petition, hoping for a positive outcome at this publicly owned facility. Emotion aside, the ratepayers and residents of Stafford want to know some facts. The opacity of this closed-door deal is the opposite of transparent and accountable governance. In April 2022, the Brisbane Racing Club registered the business name Club Stafford seven months before the changing of the lease. There are also serious concerns that your council may have breached the City of Brisbane Act in disposing of a valuable asset without tender to a for-profit corporation, which is undeniably not a community organisation. Lord Mayor, when did your council advise the Brisbane Racing Club they were being considered for the lease transfer and who made the call?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy unfortunately has misled the chamber. He claimed that there were 900 local residents that have signed a petition. And in fact, 10% of the signatures were from the suburb of Stafford. 10% of the signatures are from the suburb of Stafford. So councillor Cassidy is quite clearly misleading, misleading. Mr Chair, will you please intervene?
Councillor Johnston, please.
Councillor Cassidy is quite clearly misleading the community about the number of local residents who are concerned about this issue. There are certainly a lot of Labour Party branch members that have signed the petition and we know that. They've come from near and far and in fact, from outside of Brisbane as well. And suddenly taking an interest in an issue... as well, and suddenly taking, suddenly taking an interest in an issue that is quite clearly being pushed as a political issue by the Australian Labour Party and the Labour councillors. But what I can say is this, it's time, it's time to come clean, councillor Cassidy, on what it is you are against here, because you voted for the same lease when it was awarded to Crusher's Leagues Club, the same lease. He voted for it, and his colleagues voted for it. So is he against that lease now even though it's the same lease? And secondly, is he against poker machines? Because we know, year in, year out, they have supported clubs that have poker machines, they have supported leases for clubs that have had poker machines, they have spoken in favour of giving leases to clubs with poker machines. So what is it that they are against? They have simply manufactured this issue, and they have tried to claim that there is something wrong here, and there is nothing wrong with this, it is a good outcome for the ratepayers of Brisbane, it is a good outcome for the people of Stafford.
Point of order to you councillor Cassidy.
The question, which came from a Stafford resident, was very specific. When was the Brisbane Racing Club advised they were being considered for the lease, and who made the call on that lease?
That question was preempted by a long preamble, and the Lord Mayor is relevant to the totality of the question. Lord Mayor.
What this is, is a great deal for not only the residents of Brisbane but for the people of Stafford, because it will see $7.5 million injected into activating and bringing to life a community facility which will be open to them, which will, which will be able to be a community venue, and which will inject $200,000 a year back into community sport. Now, I would simply say councillor Cassidy, it's time to put up or shut up. If you think there is actually something wrong that has been done here...
Point of order to you councillor Cassidy.
Then you know what to do.
Point of order to you councillor Cassidy.
We've heard the Lord Mayor spin week in and week out. The question was very specific, Chair. When was the Brisbane Racing Club advised that they were going to get the lease, given they registered the name Club Stafford seven months before the transfer?
You're now debating the point of order. You're now debating the point of order. The question was long, and the Lord Mayor has five minutes to respond.
And so, as I said, Mr Chair, if councillor Cassidy believes that there is something wrong with the process here lawfully, then he knows what to do. He knows what to do, and in fact, he should do it because he is legally obliged to do it. But the fact that he hasn't done it and the fact that he won't do it shows that this is a fake campaign, it is a political campaign, and it is purely political. It is purely a concoction, because they have no policies, they have no plan for our city, they have all smear and no idea, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Hutton?
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, the Shrinna Council has a strong track record of making our suburban roads and intersections safer. Can you please update the chamber on the Shrinna Council's recent delivery of safety upgrades and explain how council secures support for our commitments to get residents home sooner and safer?
Councillor Wines?
Thank you, Mr Chair, and can I thank councillor Hutton for her question and reflect upon her keen interest in ensuring road upgrades occur in her ward to make her road system more safe and more efficient and make sure that residents get home sooner and safer. In the recent period, I've been privileged to attend two separate light switch turn-ons with councillor Hutton, Monia Bellwood, and then one at Ellen Grove, right at the very edge of the city, right, excuse me, Skeppa Street, right on the, which is like literally 10 metres from the edge of the city, but necessary for the people of Ellen Grove. The reason that this question is so timely is a lot of the times I come here and I reflect upon our great work in outer north Brisbane or our work in south-east Brisbane, but I wanted this council to know that we're dedicated to all parts of the city, and I want to take some time to reflect upon the south-west in particular. Now, the question talked about how do we, how do we...
Councillor Johnston, please.
...fund some of these projects? Well, some of these projects are federally funded, whether they're Roads to Recovery or Black Spot, which are both federal allocations of funds. Now, the reason that councillor, I think, one of the things that she was curious about was how do you identify and how is Black Spot allocated? Well, the council makes application through the state to the federal government for consideration of particular intersections. The project has to be less than $2 million and be deliverable within 12 months. That is one of the fundamental, one of the fundamental elements of the Black Spot programme, which means that there are no resumptions because they push out the time, they can also affect the price. But the sort of projects we're talking about, I know that councillor Strunk is a, I guess, the big winner for this financial year with two Black Spot programmes, Black Spot intersections being delivered in his area. And can I also reflect on the last few years, the diversity of locations where we do Black Spot and Roads to Recovery work? So in the financial years 2021, Wakefield Street, Brighton Road, Sandgate, Ipswich Road, Ponsenby Street, Junction Avenue, Annally, Birdwood Street, Escher Street, Hon Park West, Sir Fred Chanel Drive, and I can accept the interjection from the councillor for Tennyson saying that we did that one really well. And I just wanted to thank the officers for their work in delivering that work and reflect upon their keen enthusiasm for delivering projects all across the city, that one in particular, the inner south. Can I also reflect on one in councillor Mackay's ward, Sir Fred Chanel Drive, Coldridge Street, which is right at the entrance to the university in St Lucia, London Road, Stanbury Road in Belmont, and Industrial Avenue and Campbell Avenue, Wakeholme. In 2122, we saw works in Adelaide Street and Wall Street in the city, Boundary Road and Formation Street, Wakeholme, Boundary Road and Skeppa, excuse me, Skeppa Street, Ellen Grove, Edinburgh Castle Road and Colax Street roundabout at Kedron, and Jeffson Street and Sherwood Road to Wong. So, and still to come will be Adelaide and Creek Streets in the city this year, as well as Rosemary and Biota Street in Anarla. So the point that I'm saying here is, you will often hear comments or reflections upon the majority that we only care for certain places, whether that be the inner city or our own communities, but the objective of that list is to show that we care for all parts of the city. And I would say, a cursory glance there would show a majority of those would occur in minority-held wards, and it's just part of, they laugh, I hear some laughs, but it's true. Sandgate, Annally, Wakeholme, Wakeholme.
Councillors, please.
I hear some unfair criticisms of our council officers' work to make motorists safer in our city. Now, in our while I...
Councillors, councillors Cassidy and Griffiths, please.
Now, the reflections upon that work are unfair, unnecessary. If the Labour figures here don't believe that our road should be safer and more efficient, which I know that they believe in their hearts, they should say so publicly, and they should call on the federal government to withdraw this. And they should also go and explain to people like Annika Wells that her money was wasted and she shouldn't have delivered that money for the people of Sandgate. And I think that's really what councillor Cassidy was getting at, that he thought that Annika Wells's efforts were stupid and pointless, which was kind of what he was getting at. Not something I believe, not something I believe, but certainly something that through his comments now is his clear view. So I would strongly encourage him to raise those concerns with Minister Wells and ask if the federal government would like to remove that work.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, last year you decided to charge Airbnbs and other short-term rentals higher rates apparently to address rental supply in our city. Can you tell us how many of those properties have now, today, been returned to the private rental market?
Thank you. Lord Mayor?
I do note, Mr Chair, that Labour councillors continue to oppose any initiatives aimed at responding to housing supply, the housing shortage and housing crises. We know that when the naval plan for Brisbane Downs came through with 4,000 new homes available in it, they voted against it. We know that time in and time out, they have voted against new housing supply for Brisbane. Now, they are trying to play politics with what is now accepted as an Australian leading response when it comes to the use of short-term accommodation providers such as Airbnb and stays. We do know, we do know now, because we've started collecting the data since the announcement on the number of properties that we're identifying, we also know it's a process that takes time because not every property is available at all times on those websites. They come on, they hop off, they come back on again, and also we require that they be available for more than 60 days in a particular year. So at any given time, there's properties coming in and out of that system. What we did make clear at the beginning is that we didn't have the data and we needed to find the data. So in terms of the question that councillor Cassidy asked, the reality is, at this point in time, we're not aware of that figure because we didn't know how many Airbnb properties there were. We didn't have that data.
Councillor Cassidy, please, you've asked a question, they're allowed to be heard in times.
We didn't have that data, but what our intent was always was to give extra incentive for those properties to be returned to the longer-term rental market. Our approach is clear, we made it very clear last year what we intended to do, and we intend to keep on rolling out these changes, identifying further properties, so that we can make sure that there is an incentive for owners to put it back into the long-term market. But if councillor Cassidy genuinely is concerned about housing, about housing availability, then he would stop opposing every neighbourhood plan that comes through, he would stop opposing developments, he would take a different approach when it comes to the supply of housing in our state and in our city, and he would also put some serious pressure on his colleagues up in George Street who have dismally failed to provide enough social housing and government housing to meet the needs of Queenslanders, so much so that we see that there are 50,000 people on the public housing waiting list or the social housing waiting list, yet there's only plans to build a few thousand new social or public homes.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order to you councillor Cassidy.
I think the Lord Mayor is rapidly running out of time. It was a very simple question, over 400 properties have been added to this new rates category, and the view was that they should come off if they're returned to the private rental market. He has those figures, so the question is simple, how many of those properties that have been reclassified as short-term rentals have now, today, been returned to the private rental market?
Lord Mayor, I'll draw you back to the question.
Councillor Cassidy quite clearly wasn't listening to the answer because I made it very clear that in the lead up to this initiative, we did not have a list of Airbnb properties or stays properties, we did not have that list, and in fact, we've had to work many, many months to identify a portion of those properties, which we've done. So in terms of the question he's answered, we do not have that data, we do not have the data, and...
Councillor Cassidy, please, stop interjecting. Councillor Cassidy, please, stop interjecting.
Councillor Cassidy clearly wasn't listening to the answer. We know that we have identified at least 400 properties that are currently meeting our criteria in terms of transitory accommodation, and they have been incentivised with higher rates, but in terms of the...
Councillor Cassidy, the Lord Mayor is answering the question, please stop interjecting.
In terms of the number of properties that went back into the private market between last year's announcement and now, we do not know because we did not ever have a list of Airbnb properties. And so, Mr Chair, councillor Cassidy...
Councillors, please.
Councillor Cassidy...
Councillor Griffiths!
Councillor Cassidy continues to try and play politics with an issue when it's quite clear he doesn't care about housing in this state and in this, in the city, when he only opposes development, he opposes the supply of new housing, he doesn't hold his colleagues in George Street accountable for not stepping up and providing social or public housing, but he wants to play politics with the Airbnb arrangements that we put in place. I would simply ask, what is your alternative proposal, councillor Cassidy, if you don't like this one? What is their policy? Their policy is to oppose everything but never to actually come up with any plans of their own, never to come up with proposals of their own. When we suggested our own proposals to help add to the supply of crisis accommodation...
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Adaman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. It has been six months since you first proposed that the now redundant quarantine facility in Pinkham Bar be used for temporary crisis accommodation. Could you please update the chamber on why this proposal is still necessary, including how you are advocating for this change?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Any councillor that genuinely cares about the plight of people who don't have accommodation would have an easy job in supporting the use of the Pinkham Bar quarantine facility for crisis accommodation. Now, it's easy for opposition councillors to oppose anything the administration is doing, and that's what they continue to do, no matter what it is, but when it comes to the issue of Pinkham Bar, we are now seeing a situation where we started a campaign on the 28th of July last year, just one day after the state government said that they didn't have a use for the quarantine facility that had been built by the federal government, and we continue to advocate and push for this to be used today, because this is a real solution. This is 500 beds that can be activated right now for people who are sleeping in cars or in tents. Now, we know that across Queensland, across public spaces, there are a number of people sleeping in cars, and we also see from time to time people sleeping in tents as well. Now, in the past, when that's happened, we've worked with the state government to try and find crisis accommodation for these people. When we identify someone that's homeless and in need of a roof over their head, we go down there, we engage with them in partnership with the state, and we find crisis accommodation for them. We did that recently in Kirilpa. People may be aware that there were a number of tents that were erected down near the bridges through there in the Kirilpa precinct, and every one of those people was offered crisis accommodation by council and the state government, every one of those people. And many of them were successfully home, some declined the offer for crisis accommodation, but those who wanted it were successfully rehomed. Now, what we see at the moment is feedback, and I'm told that there is no more crisis accommodation available in Brisbane. It's full. No more crisis accommodation available in Brisbane. So efforts to get people out of tents and cars jeopardise by the fact that there is no more crisis accommodation available at this point in time, that's what I've been advised. Yet, out at the Brisbane Airport, we have 500 beds that can be activated really quickly that the taxpayers have already paid for and that no one else has a use for. Now, I'd be happy to have the debate if someone said, well, there's another alternative or better use for this facility, but no one has come up with an alternative use. I've been out there to see the facility, and while it needs some modifications, such as the introduction or the installation of a laundry facility, this facility has, it has a full-scale kitchen, it has a medical facility, it has a security office designed by the Queensland Police Service, it is fully air-conditioned, it is noise-attenuated, it has plenty of car parking, it has a number of garden and green spaces available for people to use. And so right now, when we have no crisis accommodation available in the city, there are 500 beds that can be activated urgently and quite quickly, and I continue to call for this to happen. I have written to the state minister, I have written to the federal minister, I will continue to push until there is an appropriate use found for this facility. This has been paid for by everyone, is it available now? And it is completely unacceptable, and in fact, it is bordering on heartless that this facility is sitting there unused. It needs to be activated, I haven't been given a good reason why it shouldn't be activated, I haven't been given an alternative use for this facility, let's get on and let's house those people who need crisis accommodation.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, it's clear from council's records, the De Jersey review, and the State Inspector General's review that there were no flood warnings issued or planned for Oxley Creek in advance of the 2022 flood. No warnings, none. One year on, does council now have a specific flood warning plan or protocol for Oxley Creek? And if so, what are the criteria for its activation and when will it be made public for the community to review and understand?
Lord Mayor.
Mr Chair, this question is based on inaccurate information, it is certainly not clear what councillor Johnston has suggested, it is certainly not the case. Councillor Johnston knows full well that there are two systems that operate in terms of providing flood warnings and weather advices. One is the council system known as Weather Zone or the BCC Alert System, the BCC Severe Weather Alert System. One is, that is the one that is operated automatically, which provides location-specific information in the case of weather alerts, in the case of rising water in places like Rocky Waterholes Creek in the precinct... in the precinct that councillor Johnson refers to. This all happens automatically. This has been happening automatically for years and years. And in fact, this system was implemented following the 2011 flood. It's continued to work. It's continued to automatically send out alerts. And any suggestion otherwise is just false and misleading.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnson.
Relevance, my question was, is there a specific flood warning plan or protocol for Oxley Creek? And if so, what is the criteria for its activation? And when will it be made public for review?
Councillor Johnston, the Lord Mayor has been relevant to the question. It was a long question and he's providing an answer, which he's only a minute or so into. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I was pointing out, the system that council operates, the Weather Zone system, which is automated, which responds to Bureau of Meteorology alerts and then sends them out instantaneously to residents, that system continues. And councillor Johnson would be encouraged to continue to ensure that her residents are part of that system and are part of the Weather Zone alert system that we have. The second system, and once again councillor Johnson knows all of this, which is why it's perplexing to me that she's asking a question which I believe is based on false information. The second system is the Emergency Alert System, which is operated by state governments on behalf of the federal government. And that is a system that we had all types of problems with, not only in the 2022 flood, but more recently when we tested it out on a citywide basis just late last year. I do have good news, though. I have good news. Through my engagement with the other levels of government, I have been told that the federal and state government systems are being upgraded. So remember, remember all of the drama where the state government tried to pretend there was no problem with the system? They tried to blame us. They said, there's nothing to see here. Well, they're fixing their system.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Again, relevance, my question is about whether there is a flood warning plan or protocol for Oxley Creek. If so, what are the criteria? And when will it be made public for the community to review?
The Lord Mayor, thank you, councillor Johnson, the Lord Mayor has five minutes to answer. But sorry, councillor Johnson, you're now debating your point of order. The Lord Mayor has five minutes to answer the question. He's only two minutes or so into the answer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so the good news is that the National Emergency Alert System is being upgraded and it is being upgraded with a system that doesn't take six hours to send out a message to the whole of Brisbane. It doesn't take 14 hours to send out a message to the whole of Brisbane, but is instantaneous, instantaneous. And what's more, we know that the Emergency Alert System, because it was used for COVID related messages, was blocked by many people on their phone. In fact, when people receive...
Again, point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
It's not about COVID. This is about Oxley Creek and whether there is a specific plan and protocol for warnings on Oxley Creek for floods.
The question relates to the provision of storm warnings and flood information. The Lord Mayor has been relevant to the question.
So, Mr. Chair, councillor Johnston asked very clearly about flood warnings and flood alerts in her question and now she's saying it's about something else. The reality is...
Councillor Johnston, please.
Brisbane is a city that we're fortunate enough to have intersected by a whole lot of creeks. And many of those creeks are subject to flooding and flood planning. And we plan on a whole of city basis. But as I was pointing out, the good news is that it is now going to be possible to get messages out faster to the entire community. Now, our Weather Zone system or the Severe Weather Alert System is as close to instantaneous as we can get, but that reached people who had opted in. The new federal government system will send a message to everyone, including even if they have blocked the federal government's number. It will come through to every single device. And so this is great news. This is something that councillor Johnston should be happy about because it means everyone, whether they're in Oxley Creek, whether they're in Kedram Brook, Belimba Creek, along the Brisbane River, can get access to info...
Councillor Johnston, please do not shout out across the chamber.
Can get access to information...
Councillor Johnston, please.
About water levels rising, about requirements or suggestions to evacuate, any information that needs to be received by people urgently, this new system will help us with. So this is a great outcome. It's what we've been calling for, for pretty much the last year. And it is great to hear now that the federal government has stepped in and is acting to upgrade their system because when the next flood does happen, then we'll be able to get information out faster.
Your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, the Shrima Council has a strong focus on creating a city of neighbourhoods by investing in suburban renewal projects. Can you please update the chamber on the latest initiatives, the projects of the Shrima Council, to make our suburbs even better?
Thank you, councillor Ellen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you councillor Atwood for the question. Brisbane's fantastic lifestyle continues to attract interstate migration and our suburbs have the potential to deliver greater lifestyle, service and employment opportunities. However, with this population growth comes some challenges. Without new greenfield opportunities to turn to, we will need to continue to identify areas that can be unlocked to create vibrant new residential and mixed use communities. Council has a long history of supporting suburban renewal and during the 1990s, we saw a dramatic turnaround in the former industrial suburbs of Newstead, Tenerife and Fortitude Valley. This sparked a revival in inner city living and transformed the derelict inner north eastern suburbs without damaging the fabric of existing communities or demolishing the industrial heritage of the area. Brisbane needs to leverage its reputation as a lifestyle city that offers both high value jobs and high quality places that attract people and investment. And the Shrima Council continues to support suburban renewal through various opportunities and approaches. One of these approaches is through our village precinct projects. It is through these projects that council delivers public realm improvements, breathing new life into local shopping precincts with the aim of contributing to commercial vitality whilst creating great spaces for our communities. Since 2018, this side of the chamber has delivered 18 new village precinct projects, including the Cooperoo Junction and Martha Street Camp Hill projects in late last year. And Mr. Chair, just last week, work started on the 19th project at the Sandgate Beams Road and Stanworth Roads intersection in Boondall in councillor Cassidy's ward. Words at this location include upgrading the footpath, increasing accessibility and safety by improving pedestrian access, street greening, adding new unique seating and creative elements to improve the appearance of the popular and highly visible precinct. Also this month, we undertook community consultation on the options for the Rosalie Village Precinct project. This project proposes a new pedestrian crossing, sections of footpath upgrades, a garden bed and street trees, installed as well as the addition of speed signage around the precinct. And we will continue to deliver projects in Lumley Street, Upper Mount Gravat, Park Road, Milton and Amenia Street, Mansfield this year. Another important council initiative was announced by the Lord Mayor last year and that's suburban renewal precincts. Building on the success of council's award winning neighbourhood planning programme, suburban renewal precincts will focus on detailed planning for smaller, underutilised or strategically located suburban areas to deliver plans which will assist in achieving on the ground outcomes more quickly. The suburban renewal precincts programme aims to unlock opportunities for underutilised land to provide new homes and jobs while ensuring quick and responsible planning outcomes. We will look to achieve this by expanding the residential footprint of Brisbane into areas that may previously have had a commercial or light industry focus but do not have an industrial future. It is through our industrial strategy, Brisbane, our productive city, that more than 70 hectares of industrial land was identified that can be transitioned to modern mixed use residential developments. We will work with owners on transitioning their sites and will continue to work with local communities on identifying new opportunities for urban and suburban renewal. And this may be undertaken through proponent or council led planning opportunities. Through these suburban renewal precincts, we can recreate more locations for housing while revitalising light industrial and commercial areas, making them more attractive to new buyers and existing owners. Another 120 hectares of land was also identified for new urban enterprise areas, which will be concentrating on employment zones that can accommodate a mix of high value manufacturing businesses and services as well as opportunities for residential projects. Also under the our productive city strategy, more than 260 hectares of industrial land has been identified that can be adapted for flexible, high value, low impact industrial precincts. This includes land in Belimba, Maruka and Toong. It is a renewal strategy like these that will continue to substantially add to the growth of the city. It will reinvigorate our suburbs. It'll facilitate greater employment, leisure and retail opportunities close to where residents live. Mr. Chair, this is further evidence of the Shrima Council's commitment to make better suburbs.
Councillor Ellen, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, this LMP council spends millions of dollars on carbon offsets in China and India through a company called Vera. It has recently been reported that many offset credits from Vera were likely phantom credits and do not represent genuine carbon reductions. How embarrassing, Lord Mayor. A full organic recycling system is the most effective way for a city to reduce emissions and help achieve genuine carbon neutrality. Other councils in Queensland and beyond have accelerated their organic waste transition. So why, Lord Mayor, has your LNP Brisbane City Council fallen so far behind on organic recycling?
Lord Mayor.
Well, a couple of inaccuracies in that question. Councillor Cassidy clearly wasn't listening last week when we said we don't buy any offsets from Vera. We made it really clear last week. But that's right, the truth never is of concern to councillor Cassidy. He will repeat the big lie and keep going. The reality is, we're leading the way when it comes to environmental action in Australia and we're leading the way when it comes to the rollout of food and organic waste recycling in Queensland. We are, we are the leaders in Queensland when it comes to rolling out a programme. Now, I'll tell you what we won't be leading in. We won't be leading in cutting back the weekly red top bin service like Labour wants us to do. We won't be doing that. We won't be cutting waste services like Labour wants us to do.
Councillor Strunk, councillor Strunk, please. Councillor Strunk.
Councillor Strunk believes it's all too hard. Now, it's not, it's not too hard for us. We're going to get on and we're going to make sure we continue to gear up this food and organic waste recycling programme. And we won't be doing it by cutting the weekly red top bin rubbish collection service. Councillor Cassidy has made it very clear in this chamber that his policy is to introduce food and organic waste recycling at the expense of the weekly red top bin collection. That is Labour policy. He confirmed it in this place. He confirmed it in this place. He, he is now backing away because he knows he has stuffed up massively. He has stuffed it up massively.
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
Lord Mayor's a liar.
Oh, councillor Cassidy, that's inappropriate language in this place. I ask you to withdraw.
If the Lord Mayor can produce the minutes of the meeting where apparently this phantom policy was created, I will accept that, but otherwise he is a liar.
I ask you to withdraw the use of those terms.
No, not withdrawing, he's lying, he's lying this entire meeting, he is a liar.
Councillor Cassidy, the use of your language in this place is inappropriate.
Fine, fine.
Oh, councillor Cassidy, enough.
This leader of the opposition has discredited himself enough, so I won't add any further to that. But the reality is, we know, we know the Labour's approach has always been to cut the red top bin collection.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
Well, the Lord Mayor clearly can't produce anything in lying about what I said. So I'd ask him to apologise.
This is not, councillor Cassidy, that is not a point of order.
Oh, so you won't, you won't ask the Lord Mayor to withdraw that?
This is not a point of order. This is not a point of order.
I'm asking you...
Please sit down.
Oh, so you won't ask the Lord Mayor to withdraw those lies?
Please sit down, this is not a point of order. Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cassidy's thrown all the toys out of the cop today. Let me repeat what happened in this chamber. When I was asked about food and organic waste recycling previously, I pointed out that Labour's approach was to cut the red top bin collection. And what was councillor Cassidy's response in this chamber? Well, what's your alternative, he said? Well, what's your alternative? And then I confirmed that our alternative is not to cut the red top bin collection. So in that simple statement...
Councillor Cassidy, excuse me, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, I've asked you to withdraw your language. I now consider you're displaying unsuitable meeting conduct. And in accordance with section 21/4 of the meetings like the law, I hereby request that you cease your interjections and the use of inappropriate language in this place. Lord Mayor.
I think the reaction from councillor Cassidy shows that he knows he messed up massively. When he asked me, well, what's my alternative other than cutting the red top bin collection service? In saying that, he confirmed that that was his position. It's really clear to everyone in this chamber what happened. But here's an opportunity, councillor Cassidy. How would you fund a citywide rollout of food and organic waste recycling if you weren't going to cut the red top bin collection service? Now, we know he keeps pointing to other councils who have done this interstate. What have they done? They've cut the red top bin collection service or they have massively reduced the size of the red top bin. That's Labour's policy. That is their policy. They keep saying we should follow the lead of those councils that have cut the red top bin. We're not going to do that. We will not cut basic waste collection services like Labour will. We will not do it. We will add additional services, which is why we need to gear this up. We're not going for a big bang approach like Labour wants where they want the cutting of the red top weekly collection service. Because here's the thing.
Councillor Cassidy! Councillors on all sides, councillor Wines, please. Not across the floor. Lord Mayor.
Remember when we temporarily paused the curbside collection, which happens one time a year? And Labour literally lost the plot about it. Yet they're fine to cut the weekly red top bin collection service, Mr. Chair.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. That ends question time for today. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report of February 13, 2023, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, the 13th of February, 2023, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, 13th of February, 2023, be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're approaching the 12 month period since the last flood. But we're also approaching the 12 month period between now and the next council elections. And it is a serious matter that at this point in time, the Australian Labor Party has not expressed any policies other than to cut the red top bin collection service in order to roll out food and organic waste recycling. And the other policy that I'm aware of is a reduction of speed limits to 30 k's an hour. They're the two policy positions that have been put forward by the Australian Labor Party councillors with around 12 months, just over 12 months out from the next election. And so it is very clear that Labour in the next 12 months is not really interested in policy. They are only interested in slinging mud. They're interested in spreading mistruths. They are full of smear, but they literally have no ideas for the future of our city. They have no positive plans for the future of our city. They just want to throw mud. And that is quite disappointing because we are always willing to engage in debate on ideas. And in fact, I have to say, even though he's not here, I do want to give councillor Sri credit for one thing. He might have some extreme ideas, but when he gets up in question time and asks a question, often it is a reasonable question to ask. It's a genuine question. We've seen a number of times where councillor Sri has gotten up...
Councillors, please. Councillors, please. Lord, councillors, please, Councillors. Could I have some water, please, councillors? Could we just calm down for a moment and allow the... Could we just calm down for a moment and allow the Lord Mayor to continue to speak? Lord Mayor.
And so, Mr Chair, Mr Deputy, Mr Acting Chair, we have seen when there's a legitimate question asked, we will engage, we'll be genuine in our response, we will answer the question, we will say whether we agree with it or we don't. But you see the contrast today when Labor gets up. And literally, their one policy is to throw mud, is to spread mistruths, is to use all types of innuendo to suggest various things that simply aren't true, yet they're not prepared to genuinely engage on the future of our city. And so there is a concern, there's a genuine concern. But the good news for the people of Brisbane is, we are one hundred percent, in fact, a hundred and fifty percent focused on the future of Brisbane. We are focused on what transport improvements that we need going forward to meet the needs of a growing city. We're focused on maintaining the high level of service and standards out in the suburbs that when you go around Australia, Brisbane does really well in comparison when it comes to the way that we invest in the suburbs. And Labor knows well that eighty-six percent of our entire budget is spent in the suburbs of Brisbane. But at the same time...
councillor Strunk, please.
But at the same time, at the same time, we're also investing in the infrastructure our city needs. And whether it is major investments like Brisbane Metro, stage one of Brisbane Metro, and then planning for future stages of Brisbane Metro and where it can go next, or whether it is building new sustainable infrastructure like our green bridges and cycleways and connecting in our active travel network, or whether it is investing in parks and green space that really are important in the livability of our city and its suburbs, not just Victoria Park, obviously Victoria Park is a huge and exciting project, but it's actually dwarfed by the park spend that we make every single year. And in fact, this year we're spending two hundred and fifty million dollars on parks across the city. That's just in one year. And so we will continue to invest in infrastructure, in better transport, in making our city green and supporting the great lifestyle, but also in the sustainability of our city. Now, the Labor Party and the opposition hates the fact that we have led the way when it comes to our sustainability agenda. They hate the fact that we're one of only fifteen councils in Australia to be carbon neutral when there are five hundred councils all around Australia. They hate the fact that lots of councils went to declare a climate emergency, but only a fraction of those councils became carbon neutral, and we are one of them that didn't virtue signal by declaring a climate emergency. We just got on and did the job that needed to be done. And so they can't get their head around it. They hate it. They try and undermine it, they try and discredit it. But they are trying to discredit a federal system, not our system, a federal system that is something that not only other councils around the country are looking at joining, but also some of the major corporations in our nation are keen to join and become part of because they... Wow, did you hear that councillor Murphy? Someone said the federal Labor system was greenwashing, which is a bit of a concern. If that is in fact the case, then I would simply put the challenge out, get the federal government to abolish the climate-active, carbon-neutral programme if you don't think it is legitimate. We know that won't happen because we know it is important that more and more organisations, more and more levels of government, more and more companies join that system. We also see the ostrich-like approach with Labor when it comes to new ideas, when it comes to our city. We know that they are always sceptical when it comes to disruptive technology like introduction of e-scooters. They were never fans of e-mobility, and we know that they are sceptical about other disruptive technology as well that's coming. They are sceptical about wonderful projects like Brisbane Metro that are now supported by all three levels of government. And the last time I checked, the other two levels of government aren't LMP governments, they are Labor governments. And they are sceptical about game-changing technology that is emerging in other parts of the world. We will keep an open mind because we know that in a short period of time, this technology can really assist when it comes to giving people options to move around our city. Just have a look at the way that ride-sharing has changed the way people move around, not only in Brisbane but around the world. It is something that in a short period of time, just a matter of years, companies like Uber have literally changed the game. They've disrupted old ways of doing things. And just like that, Brisbane Metro will disrupt the old ways of planning transport networks. There are some people who think it's not public transport unless it is a train on a very expensive set of tracks, or a tram on a very expensive set of tracks. There are some people who think that it's only legitimate transport if it's on tracks. Well, in my recent visit to Vancouver, Vancouver is a city that now has more than fifty percent of all trips being taken on public and active transport, so they're doing really well, they're leading the way. I asked them what they see as the future of public transport in Vancouver. They provided a slideshow, and in that slideshow, they talked about rolling out bus rapid transit projects right across the city. Nine lines, nine lines. And they said the advantages of bus rapid transit massively outweigh the advantages of rail. It is quicker and more affordable to achieve, you can carry large numbers of people really quickly and efficiently, it doesn't require the massive disruption that we see with the building of rail lines or the massive cost with the building of rail lines. And guess what? It's flexible. You can move it out to new corridors quickly and easily. And so their vision of the future, and they actually had a slide where they literally said, the Brisbane Metro pilot vehicle is what we envisage using in Vancouver in the future. That is their future transport plan, to roll out nine metro lines using bus rapid transit technology, using the Brisbane trackless tram kind of model for the future of Vancouver. Yet you have the opposition here criticizing it, bagging it out, when all three levels of government are on board with this. Now, we know that one of the key reasons that we went after the Olympic Games and Paralympic Games of twenty thirty-two is it was an opportunity...
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension. Seconded.
Move for extension by deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers. All in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Acting Chair. Going after the games was an opportunity to revolutionize public transport and the way people move around the southeast Queensland region. It was always one of the top things that we were focused on right from the beginning. The region is growing quickly, we need better transport, we need better connectivity. Now, how many rail lines do you think we'll be able to build across southeast Queensland by twenty thirty-two? Like, you know, if you look at the history, Cross River Rail has been talked, it was talked about for twenty years before it was actually started construction. The Redcliffe Rail Line, or the Morton Vale Rail Line, was talked about for a hundred years before it was actually built. So take a guess on how many rail lines we expect to get rolled out between now and twenty thirty-two. Now, my answer is I'd like to see a few, I'd like to see better connections between the Gold Coast and the Sunshine Coast and Brisbane, and connections up through to Tuwumba, and connections linking in the councils of the region. I'd love to see that. But the track record of the state government is not pretty crash hot when it comes to rolling out new transport infrastructure. And so if we're going to be honest about the opportunity for game-changing mass transit, then you have to start thinking that the Brisbane Metro opportunity is the number one opportunity for transport in Greater Brisbane. That kind of solution, it's what Vancouver has accepted, it's what Vancouver is now working towards in a ten-year plan, and it's what I'm excited about, it's what my team is excited about, it's what councillor Murphy is excited about, and it's what serious transport planners are excited about. We have the ability to continue to roll out new metro lines to different parts of the city and the region between now and twenty thirty-two. We have the ability to do that not only from a time perspective, but also it's more affordable than the alternatives. It's more affordable than building rail lines, even though we'd like to see rail lines built. And so to be very clear, I'm not going to lose hope that we'll get better rail lines or more rail lines in southeast Queensland, we need to keep pushing for that. But in terms of the projects that have happened to date, there'd be a healthy level of skepticism about what is achievable between now and twenty thirty-two. But the reality is, we need it for our growing region. It is the fastest-growing capital city in Australia, Brisbane is, and we're at the heart of the fastest-growing region. The Brisbane Metro opportunity is a real one for Greater Brisbane, and not just the Brisbane City Council area, but also surrounding councils as well. I know that there's an opportunity to connect in with Logan with the new extension of the southeast busway to Springwood. I know there's excitement in Redlands to see the opportunity for some kind of metro link going out to the eastern suburbs of Brisbane and beyond to Redlands. I know there's excitement about metro opportunities to go to Gimpy, to Gimpy Road, to Chermside and beyond on the Gimpy Road corridor. I know there's excitement about the opportunity to go to Brisbane Airport, and I'm sure there's even excitement to have metro opportunities in the western suburbs of Brisbane as well. And so this is a type of solution and technology that can be expanded, and it can be expanded more cheaply and cost-effectively and efficiently than other forms like heavy rail or light rail. And so we need to get serious about this. This is transport technology that will change the game. Vancouver knows it, we know it here in Brisbane. The only people who don't seem to know it is the Australian Labor Party councillors sitting in this chamber. But we will keep pushing, we'll keep working to make sure that Brisbane has better transport, southeast Queensland has better transport in the lead-up to the twenty thirty-two Olympics. Last night, our assets were lit up in red to support the twenty twenty-three Heart Valve Disease Awareness Week. This week runs from the twentieth to the twenty-sixth of February and helps raise awareness of the serious but treatable disease. The campaign encourages Australians over the age of sixty-five to start a conversation with their doctors about it. Tomorrow night, the Victoria Bridge and Topricle Dome will be lit up in red to support World Encephalitis Day. Encephalitis is a largely unknown disease which causes inflammation of the brain. The disease affects five hundred thousand people globally every single year. On Saturday night, City Hall will be lit up in white and purple to support the Chaplain Watch Annual Gala Ball. Chaplain Watch are very familiar faces in our city's life, particularly when it comes to nightlife. They perform very important work in supporting the vulnerable people in our nighttime precincts like Fortitude Valley, and I know that councillor Howard and other councillors have been active in supporting Chaplain Watch and working with them. Item A in the report here is the annual operational plan progress and quarterly financial report for December. This report reflects council's financial position for the period ended December twenty twenty-two. The report gives an overview of the commercial operations and financial wellbeing of council's business activities. We can see in the report that despite the significant challenges we've faced in terms of the supply chain, labor availability, inflationary costs on a whole range of things, we have delivered capital works across the city worth over a half a billion dollars to the end of December twenty twenty-two. And we keep saying that this year's a year of building, and by December, a half a billion dollars had been injected across the city in building things and gearing up for a better Brisbane. This is significantly higher than it's been in recent years at the same point in the financial year. So it is a year of delivery, it's a year of building, this quarterly report shows that. The figures are there in black and white. This administration will continue to support those major city-shaping projects, whether it's Brisbane Metro, green bridges, Victoria Park, or the countless suburban upgrades that are happening right across the city, whether it's the shade sales for suburban parks, whether it's suburban park upgrades like Bradbury Park, like Archerfield Wetlands, like countless other park upgrades. We're investing in the big things and the small things. I did point out earlier that eighty-six percent of our entire budget is invested in the suburbs as part of our suburbs first guarantee. Overall, revenue is currently above budget within the year, but that's mainly due to the receipt of some grants and subsidies earlier than expected, so we expect it to level out as the year progresses on. Operational expenses are currently below budget due to some refacing of expenditure, but we're also accelerating expenditure in Programme Three related to our flood recovery projects. The finance chair will provide some further information on this report. Item B is the Stores Board submission for the supply and delivery of hardware and paint. Any idea that we're not focused on the basics? You just have to look at this submission, hardware and paint, you know, one of the critical minor but important ingredients that we need to get on with the job right across the city. This particular panel, we're asking for an exemption so that we can sole-source with the Endeavour Foundation. The Endeavour Foundation will be known to, I think, virtually all of you as a wonderful organization, which is Australia's largest disability service provider. Their headquarters are here in Brisbane, and the Endeavour Foundation currently supply council with timber stakes, and there's our intention to keep this arrangement as is, and also as part of our intention to award at least ten million dollars' worth of contracts to social enterprises, of which Endeavour Foundation is one. The whole contract is for an initial term of four years with a four-year option to extend. The tender will be released to the market next week and will be closing mid-April after Easter. Item C is the Stores Board submission for Microsoft Enterprise Licensing Agreement. It's little surprise that the organization has a large and diverse use of products such as Microsoft Word, Excel, Outlook, PowerPoint, and a whole range of other Microsoft products. Council's current software licensing spend with Microsoft is approximately ten million dollars per annum. As council's use of Microsoft products expands, it is expected that this expense will increase in coming years. We've used the Queensland Government's standing arrangement for products such as this as the starting point for this agreement. Council expanded the negotiations to include software assurance services to ensure that the cost did not increase out of context with council's increased use of Microsoft products. Pricing will be locked for the duration of the contracts with no price adjustments. Significant benefits have been achieved under this negotiation, including combined cost avoidance of approximately thirteen million dollars over the proposed five-year term. So to be clear, as a result of the negotiation, we started with the state government's procurement arrangement, we then negotiated, we've been able to save an estimated thirteen million dollars...
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension. Seconded.
Motion for extension, moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
I was actually just finished.
Further debate. councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Just before I get into these items, I do just want to raise an extremely important point about something that Lord Mayor said earlier. He used the term "the big lie" in response to a question of mine. That's an anti-Semitic Nazi slur. Language matters, language is important, and I would just say that our city's leader does need to be very careful about what kind of language... Sure, call me a liar, but don't use certain types of language that has a very specific connotation to people of the Jewish faith, particularly here in Brisbane.
Point of order. Mr Chair, my wife is Jewish, this is just rubbish.
councillor Cassidy, if we could return to debate on the N C item, please.
Thanks very much, deputy chair. Yeah, thanks very much. I stand by what I said then, that term is extremely offensive. Before us today, there's three items on here, the annual financial... The annual financial and operational report for the December quarter, a Stores Board submission for supply and delivery of hardware, and a Stores Board submission for some IT equipment. There's a couple of things that are missing, of course. That's A, B, and C. What we should see on here is clause D, which is a housing strategy. We're in the midst of a housing crisis at the moment. The Lord Mayor promised a housing strategy in 2019. It seems to be missing from my NC. I'm not sure if it's in on anyone else's.
Councillor Cassidy, if I could just return you back to these particular items, please. None of those other items are on.
No, D's not there. E should be there too, which is Fogo, fast-tracking organic recycling. Deputy Chair, of course, it's not there. It's not there. I can't talk about it. There is an F, a big fat F, failure. That's the grade that this LMP administration gets for their efforts this week, particularly on the December quarter of the financial report of the budget. Now, it's confusing why the LMP don't bring these really important policies and the levers in which council can pull to address issues facing the residents of Brisbane. It's confusing to residents why this Lord Mayor doesn't do that kind of thing. But what is really clear in the papers before us today, particularly in clause A, is that Brisbane residents are paying more, but they're getting less out in the suburbs for it. And he's trying to keep it a secret, of course, and this is what we've now, the reality we're in in this council chamber, that this threadbare report that's before us today hides the progress on individual projects that were promised by the Lord Mayor in June last year. He promised a whole list of projects, and he won't say how the progress on those is going, whether they're still going ahead at all, whether they've been cut from the budget altogether. We know why he surrounds his administration in so much secrecy, because he's really not interested in the suburbs of Brisbane. All of those things that he listed earlier as his key achievements are all inner-city, big flashy things that carry enormous price tags, which have seen world-beating cost blowouts here in Brisbane on his watch, and he's really proud of that. Now, the LMP, what we do know on headline figures is that the LMP have underspent on projects across Brisbane to date in this report to the tune of $160 million. $160 million underspend in the suburbs of Brisbane. Now, this just comes months after the highest rates increase in a decade on this Lord Mayor's watch. So, under Adrian Schriner and the LMP here in Brisbane, you're paying more than ever. And what are you getting in return? A $33 million underspend on environmental projects, a $22 million underspend on sporting and community clubs and publicly-owned facilities, a $35 million underspend on infrastructure across our city and the suburbs, and almost $10 million underspend on community health and safety on projects like mosquito spraying. We all know, we all know that didn't get, what didn't get cut, of course, in the budget in the last six months, and that's this LMP administration's advertising budget. Of course, they're spending, continuing to spend increasing, increasing amounts on advertising of themselves, advertising their inner-city projects, but we're not seeing a return out in the suburbs. There's no underspends, of course, on the Brisbane Metro, which has now blown out to almost $2 billion. In fact, there's a $400 million overspend on that project, which we saw the Lord Mayor throw good money after bad at that, at the end of last year. So, there's not much you can really say about the budget papers before us today, because it's threadbare, it's shrouded in secrecy, and there's one reason for that, because the Lord Mayor is running scared from the people of Brisbane. The other items, the Stores Board submissions, we will support these, because as we've been clear on the record, some things need to be contracted out. We need to have a contract for things that can't be supplied in-house in council. Our criticism of continuing contracting out has been about basic ongoing council work, and getting supplies for council to carry out that work is an important contract, and we will reserve our judgement on what does come back in terms of the value for money for ratepayers on that when those tenders are delivered to council. We will support the contracting plan on item B. And on item C, the Microsoft Enterprise Licensing Agreement, there is just one point in here that I think needs some clarification, that council will be sourcing this licence agreement through the state government's arrangements, but it also says in here that the current Queensland Government Microsoft SOA is due to expire on 3rd of December 2024, and any contracts entered into over the term of the SOA will survive the expiry of the SOA, lot of acronyms in there, and continue as separate standalone contract. But earlier throughout the contract, it says council shouldn't enter a standalone contract with Microsoft because it wouldn't be financially advantageous to the people of Brisbane. So, some clarification around that. We do accept that entering the arrangements through the state government's Microsoft licence arrangements is the best deal for ratepayers. We will support that, but just seeking some clarification. Before I sit down, I'd just ask that item A be taken seriously, item for voting.
Further debate. Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Acting Chair. I rise to speak on item B, the Stores Board submission, significant contracting plan for supply and delivery of hardware and paint. So, the significant contracting plan is seeking approval for a public tender to establish a panel of suppliers for the supply and delivery of hardware and paint to support council's maintenance activities, which includes things like general hardware, bag cement, timber paint tools, as well as retail supply to meet council's requirements. As the Lord Mayor mentioned in his speech, that this is something that was basically BAU for council officers. And it's used, what we do is, the contract is used to undertake general repairs across the city, and it's used by our trade services area along with all operation area of council. The items sourced under this contract will be used for everything from repairing and painting of a park bench to repairing a door in one of our many buildings. As the Lord Mayor previously mentioned also, the only thing we weren't going to panel for is the wooden stakes and pegs, and this exemption is being sought in accordance with section five for social enterprises of council's procurement policy. And I'm delighted to hear that the opposition will not be opposing this particular item. We do source all of our wooden stakes from the Endeavour Foundation, which everyone will know is a fabulous initiative, which supports people with intellectual disabilities to help them get and keep a job they love. So, the current panel of suppliers for hardware and paint is due to expire on the 30th of November and 31st of March 24 respectively. This public tender process will replace these panels and it's scheduled for release next week. The reason the panel requires nine suppliers is to assure the availability of a wide range of use for council's maintenance activities, and I think everybody in this place knows just how difficult not only suppliers, but workers is available, the shortage of it, and the expense of it that we're all going through at the moment. So, based on historical levels of activity, the expected expenditure is $19 million over the potential maximum eight-year term. However, funding is only required when an appropriately delegated council officer approves placing orders under the corporate procurement arrangement subject to approved funding availability. I commend the submission to the chamber. Thank you, Mr. Acting Chair.
Further debate. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on item A, the annual operation plan progress and quarterly financial report. I just want to put on the record the Lord Mayor's failure to provide adequate financial information regarding the progress of the council budget. As I pointed out in the budget last year, and it clearly was not known to the LMP councillors, the way in which the budget has now been publicly accounted for has radically changed. And we can see the outcome of that here today in this quarterly financial report. Normally, we would get a line-by-line breakdown of each budget expenditure item and progress tracked against whether or not the expenditure is on target, or if it was delayed, or if it was cut, or if it was reallocated elsewhere. The report we have before us today does none of those things. This report is like a list of, this is what we have done. How many visits to libraries? How many SAM signs have been monitored? How many people have visited, or how many people have had a Kindy Waste Workshop? What this does not do is properly account for the progress of ratepayers' funds. This Lord Mayor is presiding over the death of transparency and accountability in this city council budget. Now, this has been a big problem for many years, because the LMP wants to hide its absolute inept mismanagement of this council's finances. And this report before us today gives us the best indication of what is going wrong with this. When council can put out a report and basically talk about library visits to account for $4 billion in expenditure, there is something wrong. The idea that we are accountable to the ratepayers of Brisbane is critically important, and how the funds are allocated in the budget and expended is critically important. What is unclear from this report before us today is where funds are being rephased, is their word, where it's going to, what's been cut, what's getting more money. There's the odd indication, of course, the Metro is just sucking up more and more money out of this council budget, and less and less is getting done out in the suburbs. Many of the capital items that were listed in the budget for Tennyson Ward, not that there were that many, but they haven't even been started. So, Gordon Thompson Park remediation, not mentioned in here, no progress has happened to date. A footpath for Sherwood Road Sherwood, a busy district road, no action taken to date. And when I've asked questions, I'm told it'll be delivered in the financial year. Now, I don't actually believe that is correct, because there's no actual progress happening on these issues. There are a number of other projects, for example, the barbecue and picnic shelters for Princess Street Fairfield, there's been no action on those. So, there is a real problem with the level of accountability for the expenditure of this council's budget. And this report is written for somebody, you know, it'd be perfect for someone in grade seven to do a research project on, because it's just, it lists out, I'll give you some examples. I'll just give you a couple of examples for those listening at home. I'm on lifestyle and community services, just open to a page. Supported more than 80 festivals in the funding programme since July 2022. Great, wonderful. Which ones have worked? Which ones haven't worked? Which ones have got funding? We don't know against the budget, and there were about 150 or 160 festivals that were listed. So, are all of them getting the funding? Is the funding allocated to that programme item still the same as it was before? We don't know, because this just says very nicely, we funded 80 festivals. It's not even close to what was in the budget. The Lord Mayor's hosted 14 seniors' Christmas parties. How lovely were the 113,400 tickets sold? There's been 2.4 million, 2.4 million, sorry, 2.4 million visits to council libraries. Well, that's wonderful. How is the allocated budget for library expenditure tracking against the actual expenditure? Is the Evident Park library project, which was eye-wateringly expensive, like, it was just epically a huge amount of money? I mean, all I want's a little extension for the back of Corinda, and we need a bit of a revamp over at Annaly, but for goodness sake, that library is just gold-plated over there. But is there any, we've got here that the contract has been awarded in November 2022. So, in February, we're being told the contract was allocated previously. How's it going? Have they started work? Is the funding on track? We don't know, because none of that information is provided. Council's delivered 7,200 activity sessions for Brisbane. That's great. But how is it tracking against the budget? None of that is accounted for. This report is light on in detail. It does not address the critical, transparent, and accountable nature of the way in which public ratepayer funds should be accounted for. And the Lord Mayor stood up, stood up during the budget last year, and, oh, you're wrong, you don't know what you're talking about, we're going to be delivering, and quite a few others, they were clearly told to go out and do it, stood up and said, no, you don't know what you're talking about, we're still going to be delivering reports in the normal way. Well, here we are, and no, we're not. You cannot believe a word these people say. They will say anything to cover up their own mismanagement, and this report really does a disservice to the people of Brisbane in terms of transparency and accountability. I cannot vote to support this item today, because there is simply not enough information in here about what is happening with the funding in the budget, where it is changing, whether projects are running ahead of schedule, behind schedule, and what projects have had allocations changed. For those who want to understand what I'm talking about here, this is a detailed dot point about the Metro. Higher-than-anticipated expenditure due to accelerated process, partly offset by reallocation from capital expenditure to operating expenses in the Brisbane Metro project. Great. We know it's blown out by $400 million. It's probably more than that by now, and they're accelerating expenditure? This is a dud project that's just got worse and worse. And we know that the Lord Mayor is intending to cut bus services all over Brisbane, all over Brisbane. Councillor Murphy's been living in denial as well. There's just hundreds of bus services that are either being cut or truncated, exactly like I've been saying for several years, and people in the suburbs of Brisbane are very worried about it. So, the problem, the problem with this annual operations report is that it fails to provide critical financial information about the status of projects. And I just want to, I just want to, you know, all over Brisbane, we desperately need roads to be resurfaced. Oxley Road is in a horrific state. Oxley Road, Oxley, has grass growing up through it. The glued cracks that were glued back together are cracked open, and there's new cracks. According to council, that road does not meet council's criteria for resurfacing, even though it has been flooded, even though it has huge cracks. You go a little bit further down to Oxley Road at Graceville, where I've taken the chairperson, councillor Marks, the grass in the bitumen needs to be mowed. It is that bad. There is a terrible, terrible lack of investment going into resurfacing of roads. And do you know what the achievement that's mentioned here in a dot point? They've completed 110 pavement design reports for the annual resurfacing programme. We don't want to know that there's reports been done. We want to know which roads have been resurfaced, whether or not the budget for road resurfacing has been underspent, whether or not the budget for road resurfacing is being reallocated to other projects, whether or not the road resurfacing budget has been overspent, and if so, why? None of that standard operating information, which has been available for the 15 years that I've been a councillor, is available in this report any longer. This administration is hiding the financial deliverables of this council. It is failing to transparently account for ratepayers' funds, and the new reporting system lets Brisbane residents down by failing to ensure that councillors can understand how the funds are being allocated, where they're being allocated, and why, and where this administration is failing to deliver. It is, it, I mean, the outcome of what's happened over the last few years with the massive staffing cuts and changes to the bureaucracy, there's no one accountable for anything. You know, your local officer will tell you, I can't find anybody to even tell me what's happening with this. It's not good enough, and this shows what's wrong with the administration.
Further debate. Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on item A and item C as well. So, the statement of comprehensive income compares the year-to-date results to the annual budget for the same period last year. Mr. Deputy Chair, as you go through the report, you'll see that revenue has increased compared to this time last year with additional grant revenue received for the Brisbane Metro, the buyback programme, and the urban congestion fund. We've also received an insurance advance of our flood recovery works. While revenue has increased, so too have the costs of many inputs to council. Compared to last year, sadly, fuel costs have increased by nearly $10 million, and raw materials and consumables have increased $16.3 million, in addition to many, many other increases. As the Lord Mayor said, the first half of this financial year, council has rolled out $536 million of works towards our significant capital programme, which is a massive effort, given the headwinds faced by everyone who is undertaking construction works at this point in time. It's significantly higher than it has been in recent years and at the same point in the financial year. Operating expenses are currently below budget for this period due to some rephased expenditure, as has been identified. This was partly offset by accelerated expenditure in Programme Three. In Programme Eight, city governance, revenue is currently ahead of budget due to some higher-than-anticipated interest on deposits and some lease accounting adjustments. In the annual operational plan and progress report, I'm particularly pleased to see In the annual operational plan and progress report, I'm particularly pleased to see that we're well and truly on track to reach our targets, not only for local buy, but also for our social enterprise investments. Item C, Mr Deputy Chair, that's the Stores Board submission for council's Microsoft Enterprise licensing agreement. As the Lord Mayor said, council's existing contract with Microsoft was due for renegotiation by the 30th of June twenty-three, and the proposed term of the agreement is five years. Council has a significant investment in Microsoft products that are used across all areas of our organisation. The current deployment of Microsoft products includes standard items such as Word and Excel, but also more niche products that are used by, that are owned by Microsoft, including security products like Sentinel and Defender. Council is also adopting more specialised products such as Microsoft Azure, which council uses for cloud-based IT apps, storage and processing capabilities. Our current software licensing spend with Microsoft is approximately $10 million a year, and this may expand in coming years, in line with our increased usage of these Microsoft products. As the Lord Mayor said, our procurement officers use the Queensland Government's standing offer arrangement as the starting point for the agreement, and we've included software assurance services to ensure the cost did not increase out of context with our increased use of the products. So I'd like to point this out, Mr Chair, as it's something that we are firmly focused on. It's not simply good enough just to roll on and keep increasing our operational expenses here in council. In a climate where we face significant increases in costs for materials and services, we need to also look at our overhead costs and drive value for ratepayers, and that is the lens to which we have looked through this. This is about financial, responsible financial management, which ultimately will help us put downward pressure on rates for our residents. To councillor Cassidy's question, our arrangement will continue past the life of the state's agreement as we place an order which will exist until the expiry of the order, and I commend these items to the chamber.
Further debate? Councillor Cumming?
I'll just raise a quick point, Mr Chair, the rates and utility charges figure here, I'm very concerned about, and I notice the Chair didn't provide details of that, they're up eleven point three four six percent compared to last year, that's way above the inflation rate, and I'd like a, an explanation from someone in the administration as to why that's occurring.
Any further debate? No further debate? I'll now put the report. We'll move first with item A. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division?
Division moved by councillor Cassidy and by councillor Cumming, ayes to the right, noes to the left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eighteen in favour, three against, and one abstention.
The ayes have it. We will now move items B and C. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Deputy Mayor, Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair, I move that the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting, held on Tuesday the 14th of February 2023, be adopted. Seconded.
Moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 14th of February 2023, be adopted. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair, before I get to the committee report for last week, I have to say it's been great to see such an extremely busy time in the city over the Christmas recess break for us, holidays for many. It was fantastic to see that the numbers coming back particularly to the city and the, the shops here, leading all the way from Black Friday, Cyber Monday, and right through Christmas as well. So it's great to see everybody out and about, the weather was lovely over Christmas as well, onion didn't hit too much, and I have to say, it's great to feel that buzz that hopefully 2023 is the year for businesses to fully recover as well. In that way, we have been working very hard to continue supporting them as well, the harbour has been extremely busy, and I'd just like to talk about the free events that are available from tomorrow through to next week, or I should say that, yeah, from tomorrow through to next week. We've got a lot of workshops that are there to support our, our local businesses, but we have got an interactive keynote act before you overthink, maybe something that everybody needs to do in this place as well. There's one calling Solving the People Gap, Train, Engage, Retain and Perform, probably something that's extremely important when we're thinking about our, our staff and retaining staff, we know that there is labour shortages still in some of the areas, and that is being provided by our business partner, David Bainbridge. We have the Doing Business in 2023, CCIQ's latest Pulse Report findings is on the 23rd at 12 o'clock, of course, being delivered by CCIQ, and it's great to hear some of the leading business experts uncovering the topics like labour challenges and what we're looking at coming up. And of course, the Suburban Business Hub, which has gotten even busier over the last couple of months as well, Marketing 101 on the 22nd, Develop Your Strategic Marketing Blueprint, so something if you're on the north side, or you can travel from the south side as well, to join them at the Suburban Hub in Nunda as well for that workshop. Last week, we had a presentation on the economic update, as we do at the start of each of our sessions for committee, from our new economic development manager, and as I said before, it was great to see that we had the pedestrian counts in the Queen Street Mall go up above the hundred percent line based on the twenty-nine, twenty nineteen averages. So people were actually voting with their feet to come back into the CBD, and I'm sure that's in no small measure to the hard work that our businesses have done to keep open and keep interesting over the last twelve months, but also to the team in council and Beta for the fantastic programme of events and festivities over Christmas as well. There were some interesting statistics there about employment or unemployment, which is still very, very low, a little bit higher in our youth, but the indexes on the housing prices while we are going up is still fairly reasonable compared to the Sydney and Melbourne prices as well. Overall, I think what we're still seeing is mass migration, interstate migration to Brisbane, and that will be even more considerable when we think about the international students that are coming to our shores in the very near future as well. So it's always interesting to see the update, and I look forward to seeing something that's a little bit more positive in the coming quarters for this year as well. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further debate? No further debate? I'll put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Landis?
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
Moved by councillor Landis, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the meeting adjourned for a period of fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councillors have left the meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee report, please.
Thanks, Chair, I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting, held on Tuesday the 14th of February 2023, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you, and as we move by councillor Murphy, and seconded by councillor Owen, that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday 14th of February 2023, be adopted. Councillor Murphy?
Mr Chair, for our first presentation of the year, the Transport Committee received an update on the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge. The Srinarayana Council is focused on projects that will enhance the livability and connectivity of our city, and the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge will provide a critical link between the CBD and the Kangaroo Point Peninsula, as you know. There were some challenges in 2022 with the flood and disruptions in the construction industry, but works are well and truly back on track, Mr Chair. In just the last few weeks alone, we've seen the bridge really start to take shape over the river. I was out at the CBD construction site this morning, and it is remarkable, the amount of work, the specialised skilled workers and the intricate operations that this bridge construction requires. The bridge will sit on thirty-one permanent piles, and twenty-three of these have already been completed. These piles were driven twenty metres into the riverbed and anchored into the underlying rock. This will ensure that the bridge will be stable, and importantly, Mr Chair, resilient during floods on the Brisbane River. The first deck span was installed at the CBD site in mid-January 2023. The span links the bridge abutment on the CBD to the first bridge pier. It comprises two deck modules that measure a massive twenty-five metres long and thirty-four tonnes each. The transport of the modules was made by road in a two-hour journey after midnight, reversed down Edward Street in the dead of the night. A four hundred and fifty-tonne tower crane was mobilised on-site a few days earlier and used to lift the steel bridge spans into place. And this week, Mr Chair, I'm sure many in the chamber will have seen footage of the next milestone of the bridge. I'm talking about the tower crane that is already commissioned on the construction site and will be used for major lifts required for completion of the bridge. It is the largest tower crane in the world. It can lift two hundred and twenty tonnes at its most narrow radius, which is equivalent to approximately seventeen council buses. The tower crane is ninety-four metres high to the top of the frame, that's approximately twenty-six storeys high, and just shy of the ninety-five metres that will be the final height of the completed bridge mast. Last Friday, the tower crane undertook its first lift to transport the mega-frame construction platform at Pier Four into place. This mega-frame, as we are calling it, is a forty-two-metre-wide temporary working station that will assist major works to be performed at Pier Four right in the middle of the river. From mid to late 2023, we'll also see the main mast installation happening, which will be lifted using this enormous tower crane. We have so many more project milestones coming in 2023, Mr Chair, before the bridge will open next year. Works on bridge spans over water will commence in a few weeks, we will complete the permanent marine piling and Pier Four in the next few months, and we'll begin installation of steel bridge spans over CTY Park on the Kangaroo Point side later this month. CTY Shared Pathway will be closed for approximately four weeks outside of peak hours, so nine AM to four PM, Monday to Friday. One of the questions raised by councillor Strangernorthen at the committee meeting last week was related to impacts of the closure for users, and I hope he is listening at home. I want to assure councillor that the signage will be placed at various locations along the shared pathway advising of the temporary closure. A notification about these works was distributed last week, and additional signages being installed as per his request. This will allow users to plan ahead during the closing period, and we'll also have traffic controls on-site to assist people with disabilities and the elderly during this time. It's important to note, though, that the shared pathway will remain open on weekends and during peak usage times in the morning and evening. I want to make clear, Mr Chair, that Kangaroo Point Green Bridge is not just a bridge, we are delivering a destination for Brisbane residents and visitors. Mr Chair, the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge will significantly reduce the time it takes for Kangaroo Point residents and those in Brisbane's eastern and southeastern suburbs to travel to and from the CBD. And in answer to councillor Cassidy's question last week regarding modelling of Kangaroo Point Green Bridge, we use a standard model used by council and the state government called the Brisbane Standard Traffic Model for all transport projects. This model considers employment, education, shopping and other purpose journeys, whilst it's also modelled for active transport, so walking and cycling, we use that to do the modelling for Kangaroo Point Green Bridge numbers. This model was upgraded to include recreational cycling and e-mobility as well. We modelled three years, 2021, 2031 and 2041. The model identified that by 2036, the bridge will undertake an average of 6,100 trips per day, which will lead to 84,000 fewer car trips every year. Sixty percent of people engaged during the project consultation said they will use the bridge daily, which is a tremendous, tremendous amount of people using it, and I think it will be of particular importance to residents in Kangaroo Point. Chair, the completion of the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge is anticipated currently for mid-2024, so we are all very excited and awaiting that day. Mr Chair, the committee also considered a response to a petition requesting the removal or relocation of the bike lane and reinstatement of parking along Elizabeth Street where we've installed Citylink Cycleway. Prior to the opening of the Cycleway, council relocated several on-street parking and loading zones, based on trial evaluation of Citylink Cycleway completed just recently. Council has determined the trial to be successful, and we are currently investigating a number of options to make Citylink Cycleway infrastructure permanent, and in line with that, council has no plans to remove the cycleway or to reinstate parking along Elizabeth Street. Finally, Mr Chair, I'd like to just take a moment to recognise a very important member of the Transport for Brisbane family, who will be leaving council at the end of this week. Mr Jeff Beck has been our divisional manager for Transport for Brisbane since 2014, and he's worked at council itself for almost fourteen years. During that time, he's worked with several transport chairs, some of whom are in this room, I think councillor Matic, he's worked with you, he's also worked with councillor McLaughlin, he's worked with the Lord Mayor, and actually a few councillors who have, whom he has outlasted and who have departed this place as well. It may surprise you, Mr Chair, but Jeff Beck is a military man, he's also been a defence contractor and a senior public servant in his career. By the end of his twenty-eight-year career in the military, he had reached the rank of Brigadier, having been awarded the Australian Active Service Medal and National Emergency Medal along the way. But for all of Jeff's professional achievements, this mostly long and varied career that he's had has made Jeff a man with a story for every situation. Those of us who have spent considerable time with Jeff will know that one of his most common phrases is, can I tell you a story? And while it's framed as a question, we know when it comes to Jeff Beck, it's not really a question. So while we will miss his many tales, I am certain that Jeff's time here has provided him plenty of new stories to tell in his next chapter. He's overseen the conceptualisation of our Brisbane Metro services, he's introduced e-mobility to Brisbane, he's guided us through the planning for Brisbane's new bus network, and he's introduced the first electric buses into our fleet, just to name a few achievements, Mr Chair. He's a leader in every sense of the word, he's measured and deeply respected by his team, but he also has a wicked sense of humour, which I will miss greatly. His departure leaves a massive space for us to fill, which is a job that I know the CEO and the Lord Mayor are not taking lightly. In a period of great change for this council and for public transport in Brisbane, Jeff has always been a steady hand, he has been a calm port in, in, in stormy seas, and I wish him all the very best for his next chapter. I also want to extend my gratitude to his wife Sylvia and his sons for allowing him to dedicate as much time as he has had to do to, to his service in Brisbane City Council. So I'll leave my remarks on the report at that. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Murphy, and thank you to Jeff Beck. Is there any further debate? No further debate? I'll now put the Transport Committee report to the vote. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, anybody opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee report, please.
I move that the, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting, held on Tuesday the 14th of February 2023, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by a fast-running councillor Matic, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday 14th of February 2023, be adopted. Councillor Wines?
Thank you, Mr Chair, my report today is in regards to a presentation we saw last week on the Rochedale and Priestale Road intersections. Councillors would hopefully be aware by now that the intersection there, three-quarters of it belongs to Brisbane City, and one quarter of it belongs to Logan. A lot of the benefit of this work actually does belong to Logan city residents, which is why we were very grateful for the support of both the Logan City Council and also the federal government and their financial contributions to make sure that this project went ahead. There was a recent light switch turning on, which was attended by the Lord Mayor, councillor Huang, mayor power of Logan, treasurer chalmers, and Mr- Huang, mayor power of Logan, treasurer chalmers, and Mister Ross Vasta were all in attendance for that event.
It's been a big deal.
It's a very, very good set of lights, councillor Wines, I can assure you, as good as you're going to see, as good as you're going to see. It was an illuminating event for all. All right. The intersection is close proximity to a number of schools with roughly five thousand students across those five schools, and it provides increased access to drop-up and pick-up at those areas, also improved, as is standard, improved active transport and pedestrian transport for that particular intersection. The works were of a removal of existing roundabout, installation of traffic lights, with a signalised pedestrian crossing on all approaches, widening of Rochedale Road to four lanes through the intersection, installation of dedicated turning lanes on all approaches, and additional works at those approaches. So it is an excellent piece of work. Congratulations and thanks to all of the officers involved. I hope that the residents there find that the road there is safe and efficient and gets them home sooner and safer. I have six petitions today, of which they share a common theme of traffic calming, so I look forward to contributions from local councillors regarding those.
Thank you, councillor Wines. Is there any further debate? Councillor Strung.
Not rising to enter the debate on any of these, but would ask that clause B, C and D be taken, cereatum for voting purposes, please.
B, C and D.
Yeah.
Cereatum? On block? In one block, councillor Strung? Not separately? Yeah, 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 thank you. Is that it? Not debating? Okay, right. Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I rise to speak on item A of the Infrastructure Committee report on the completion of the Rochedale Road and Priestale Road intersection upgrade. Mister Chair, on twentieth of January this year, I joined with the Lord Mayor, the mayor and council Lisa Bradley of Logan City, and a federal member Ross Vasta and the federal treasurer to officially activate the traffic lights on the Rochedale Road and Priestale Road intersection. This marks the official launch of this vital upgrade which borders between Brisbane and Logan City. Mister Chair, there are approximately twenty thousand vehicles driving past this intersection every day, and the majority of these are coming from Logan. This intersection provides an important safety upgrade for motorists and pedestrians, especially students, parents and teaching staff of the five schools surrounding this intersection. Mister Chair, I'd like to thank the Lord Mayor for initiating this important project when he was the local ward councillor, and thank the federal government and Logan City Council for their contributions to make this upgrade possible. However, Mister Chair, the only party that is missing in action in this important upgrade was the state labour government. The major cause of the traffic issues here was the lack of investment of the state government in adding an additional on-ramp to take away the traffic from Rochedale South and Springwood in Logan. Instead, the state transport main roads have pushed their traffic to the Rochedale Road and Mouse Plating Road corridor. Despite contributing to these issues, the state labour government did not put a cent into this project, which is aimed at addressing the issues they created. Thanks to the commitment made by the local federal member Ross Vasta on behalf of the federal government and the contribution from Logan City Council, we are able to deliver this much-needed project despite the state's lack of support. Mister Chair, when different levels of government can work together, we can achieve great and amazing outcomes for the people, and this intersection upgrade has proved it. I hope the state government can put more love into Brisbane to address the real issues instead of splashing money for political purposes. I commend this item to the chairman.
Thank you. Any further debate? No further debate? Councillor Wines, summing up? No? Thank you. We now move to the votes on these report items. So item A, all in favour, support of item A, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
A muscle memory.
We now move to the vote on items B, C and D together. All in favour of items B, C and D, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cumming. Please ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left. Okay, Billy, please close the bars. Clark, the results, please.
Mister Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seventeen in favour and five against.
To clear that motion, those items carried. Councillors, the remaining items, item E and F, all in favour of items E and F in the Infrastructure Committee report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the fourteenth of February twenty twenty-three be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, fourteen February twenty twenty-three be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Item A was a committee presentation on quite a substantial and significant development at two sixty-four Ipswich Road, Woolangaba. The approved development involves the redevelopment of the existing Buranda Village Shopping Centre into a substantial mixed-use precinct. The development is proposed in three stages. Stage one is the lifestyle precinct that includes four fifteen-storey residential towers with six hundred and twenty-seven new built-to-rent dwellings consisting of ninety-four studio apartments, two hundred and fifty-one one-bedroom apartments, two hundred and fifty-five two-bedroom apartments and twenty-seven three-bedroom apartments. Importantly, this stage comprises of a communal open space of four thousand four hundred and eighty square metres, which includes outdoor areas, recreational and dining areas. Stage two A of the development is a ten-storey commercial tower with an area of twelve thousand three hundred and eighty-four square metres for office, hotel, food and drink outlets with two basement levels for car parking. Stage two B consists of two fifteen-storey commercial towers with preliminary approval for centre activities, hotel, bar and showroom uses, and approximately two thousand seven hundred square metres of publicly accessible outdoor areas and landscaping. Of historical interest, the site contains the towering Buranda ventilation shaft, which was constructed in nineteen thirteen by the South Brisbane Town Council as part of the Ipswich Road stormwater catchment system. This historical landmark will be retained within its current position as a feature of the pedestrian entry on Cornwall Street. I'm pleased to inform the chamber that parking has been a key consideration, with parking provided within the podium and basement levels, with five hundred and sixty-five car spaces available for residents and three hundred and seventy car spaces for visitors. In addition, there will be provision for six hundred and thirty-two residence spaces and one hundred and ninety visitor spaces for bicycles, and commercial parking will also be available with a hundred and forty car spaces and a hundred and six bicycle spaces. Importantly, it is anticipated the site will provide approximately five hundred and eighty construction jobs and longer-term provide for three thousand two hundred long-term job opportunities, with construction expected to commence in early two thousand twenty-four. Once complete, the precinct is expected to attract over ten thousand people a day, and the resulting pedestrian activity will be complemented and supported by a safe and sheltered public realm. This development provides another example of council's commitment to the provision of housing supply and is a great example of renewal supporting our growing population and ensuring our city remains a welcoming, inclusive and livable place for current and future generations, and its location opposite the PA Hospital and closely located next to the Knowledge Corridor, and being a built-to-rent facility provides a great outcome for the workers in that area. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on the redevelopment of the Buranda Village Shopping Precinct. For many years, this shopping precinct has been on the border of Tennyson Ward and remains so.
Beautiful suburb.
No, no, but that's okay. Look, my problem is not with the redevelopment of the site in terms of the density, because obviously it is an inner-city location that is well-located for the provision of affordable housing, social housing and any other general housing that may be required. However, I am extremely concerned about the lack of car parks that are being allocated to... So from what I understand, there are four towers, there are six hundred and twenty-seven dwellings, there are only going to be five hundred and sixty-five car spaces, so that is less than one car space per unit, and there are over, there are three hundred and two and three-bedroom apartments. So some units are not going to have a car park attached to them, others are not going to maybe have one, and there may be people living, you know, three different households in a three-bedroom unit. Now, I don't presume everybody will have a car in this location, because it is well-serviced by public transport, the buses along Ipswich Road, and the redevelopment of the Dutton Park rail station, which is the closest rail station at the other end of Cornwall Street. However, there is no on-street parking in this area at all. It is located within the Woolangaba regulated parking area, and there will be no parking permits available for anybody who moves into this area. The lack of planning to ensure that there is adequate parking on-site for the people who will live here is negligent. Negligent is the word that I have to use here. If you're going to build homes, just because people are moving into affordable or social housing does not mean, does not mean that they have, does not mean that they have, that they don't have a car. So we'll often find where public housing in the area where I live is, with public housing, not enough car spaces are built, and then cars are on the street, they're on verges. That won't be possible in this area, and I'd be particularly interested in the local councillors' views on how the traffic impact will occur in that part of Woolangaba. It is of great concern to me that we are going to create an area where people, there may be crime problems because we don't have proper car parking, there may be impacts on local streets, unintended impacts through illegal parking, and I guess I'm interested in how councillor Fiona Cunningham feels about these issues. It impacts on both councillor Shree, I'm sure he's happy, he probably would like no car parks there at all, but I live in the real world and I know that people own vehicles. Not only, and this is the everyday that's happening now with more people moving into accommodation, they also own caravans, they own trailers, and they will have nowhere to park these, they will not be able to get a parking permit. So the big issue here is the lack of appropriate parking to go with a development of this size, and that's what needs to be addressed. The second issue of concern to me is the construction management plan for this site. This site is located on one of the busiest intersections in Brisbane, which this administration has already put under pressure by closing O'Keefe Street and redirecting huge amounts of traffic into Cornwall Street as a diversion for, I don't know how long, that was years that that was going, O'Keefe Street was going to be closed. If this is going to start construction this year or next year, how the construction is managed in this location is critical. This intersection carries huge, hundreds of thousands of vehicles a day through that intersection, as people access a key east-west connection corridor between Annalee and the eastern suburbs, and also to the expressway, as well as the north-south axis through Woolangaba and into the city. That intersection has to function safely and effectively, and the construction management plan must minimise the impacts on the intersection and its functionality for both local traffic and through traffic movements. Complicating this is the Princess Alexandra Hospital, which sits right opposite the site, and access for ambulances and other emergency vehicles is going to be absolutely critical to be maintained. Now, I'm sure I'll be told, "There, there councillor, don't worry about it, we'll deal with it in the construction management plan." Those things are never made public, there's no consultation that goes on. We see what this administration does by allowing the closure of roads that impacts on traffic. For example, just up the street at the corner of Cornwall Street and Annalee Road, council ticked off on the state government's decision to close the right-turn lane into Cornwall Street, forcing traffic to detour down the side streets off Annalee Road onto Ipswich Road. No consultation with anybody, no discussion with me as the local councillor, and it is appalling, appalling. It will put lives at risk. Now, the reason this is so critical as well, and I don't know what's been conditioned here, but if you're about to put up to ten thousand people a day, that is what councillor Adam has just said, up to ten thousand people a day will use this site. The key intersection that connects to it has a slip lane without a safe crossing point, right on the corner of Cornwall Street and Ipswich Road. There is no green walk arrow, there is no zebra crossing, and you're going to put ten thousand people a day, and you largely want them to be on foot, into an environment where they do not have a safe crossing point between the Princess Alexandra Hospital and this new redeveloped site with its four towers, its ten thousand people a day, and its six hundred and twenty-seven apartments, probably with fifteen hundred or more people living in them. This is negligent, negligent. Has an upgrade to the intersection been conditioned as part of the redevelopment? That's what I'd like to know. I'd like councillor Adam to stand up and say, "Yes councillor, we recognise that that intersection is not fully controlled for pedestrians, we recognise that that intersection has no bike infrastructure whatsoever, there are no bike boxes, bike lanes." You're going to put six hundred and thirty-two resident and a hundred and ninety visitor spaces for bicycles into an area that does not have a bike lane, not a single bike lane, not a single bike bus, bike box, so people can move off before the heavy vehicles and the trucks. You know, it's only another kilometre down the road where Rebecca died because the intersection had no bike infrastructure. So what has been done, because this is a major redevelopment of this site, what has been done to improve pedestrian safety at the main intersection out the front, what has been done to improve bicycle safety and access around the area? Because nothing, as far as I know, or that would be listed in here. At the other end of Cornwall Street, so if these people want to catch the train, they will walk up Cornwall Street to Dutton Park, and yes, what have I been talking about for twelve years in this place? The uncontrolled crossing point across Cornwall Street at Annalee Road. It is not controlled. Directly opposite that now, you have another slip lane on the corner of Noble Street and Annalee Road that is not controlled. It is ridiculous that council is jamming thousands of people, ten thousand people a day, into an environment where you cannot cross the road safely, where there is not a single piece of bike infrastructure to support what's going to be a significant increase in the cycling community. It is appalling, appalling. So councillor Adam, please stand up and tell me these issues have been conditioned as part of the development. Please tell me that council is requiring an investment either through the infrastructure charges for this site or as direct works as part of the condition approval to make sure that there are properly and fully controlled pedestrian safety points at the intersection of Ipswich Road and Cornwall Street, fully and properly controlled pedestrian safety points to cross the road at the corner of Cornwall Street and Annalee Road, and also at Annalee Road and Noble Street. Because if we're going to have more and more people on foot in this area accessing the hospital and the schools, we need to know that they can safely cross the road at either an intersection with a green walk signal or a zebra crossing. Now, I know the cycling community in my ward has been pushing very hard for cycling improvements in this area, and it is absolutely critical that these intersections are upgraded to accommodate what council says is going to be, there's going to be almost eight hundred, or over eight hundred, almost nine hundred bike spaces. So they're presuming a lot of people are going to... So they're presuming a lot of people are going to have bikes.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Is there any further debate? No further, sorry, councillor Griffiths.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr Chair, I rise to, uh, speak on it. I rise to, uh, speak on my concerns in relation to 264 Ipswich Road and, uh, this, uh, development that council has approved. And I think what it, uh, clearly is, is a whole lot of overdevelopment. Um, we're seeing our, our suburbs, um, which extend out to the Gaba, uh, extend out to Annalee being turned into sardine suburbs. We aren't providing the infrastructure, I think, as you aptly said, councillor Johnston, we aren't looking at issues of traffic, and we're just jamming people in. Unfortunately, this council seems to think it's more important to give a green light to developers to say, 'Let's go,' than to actually look after the people that we're housing, the people that we're looking after into the future. My concerns, um, and I use that shopping centre frequently, I use that space frequently, the, the traffic around there already is chaotic. Um, trying to cross a road there is chaotic. Trying to even get through the shopping centre is chaotic. It is, it is just absurd that we're putting so many people in, into such a small space, um, without any infrastructure. And I remain concerned about the links of this council, uh, the mayor, um, and councillors, LMP councillors, to, um, to developers and to the approval of these projects. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Any further debate? Councillor Allen.
Uh, thank you, Mr Chair, I'll just quickly close there. I mean, councillor Griffiths points, then, just another classic case of the Labour Party not supporting housing in Brisbane. They consistently oppose neighbourhood plans, and here we have a standalone development that's building a bill-to-rent product, which is in high demand in the city, in a location where it's perfectly suited, it's supported by great transport infrastructure, it's closely located to a hospital, and yet councillor Griffith once again gets up here and says no to housing. It's extraordinary, extraordinary.
We now put this, uh, report to the vote, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Allen and councillor Hutton. Please ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left. Thanks, really close, boss. Clarks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the vote being 19 in favour and one abstention.
Thank you, councillors. Please resume your seats. Councillor Mackay, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday 14th February 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you, it is being moved by councillor Mackay and seconded by councillor Landers, that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday 14th February 2023 be adopted. Councillor Mackay.
Thank you, Chair. Last week, Brisbane Sustainability Agency provided the committee with a presentation on the Archerfield Wetlands District Park, which is the next stage of council's $100 million, 20-year Oxley Creek transformation. The vision of the Oxley Creek Transformation Master Plan will see the 20-kilometre-long green space corridor from the Brisbane River at Tennyson to Warral Parkland at Larapinta transformed into a world-class green lifestyle and leisure destination. The new Archerfield District Park will be set within the 150 hectare Archerfield Wetlands Parkland, which contains a variety of habitats, including eucalyptus forest, open grassland, freshwater wetlands, and creeks. Mr Chair, there are two signature, signature community project outcomes for the parkland. The first is the Archerfield Wetlands Discovery Trail, which was opened mid-2022. The trail is already proving enormously popular with the three kilometres of shared pathway through the wetlands, allowing visitors to enjoy birdwatching, bushwalking, and even off-road cycling. The second project, which was the focus of the presentation, is the four-hectare district-scale park located within the park precinct at the old Anala Waste Water Treatment Plant on Bow Hill Road, Durack. I was so inspired by the presentation that I took the family for a bike ride through the, uh, the new park, and I can tell you from first-hand experience, it's really, really nice. The new parkland will celebrate the past use of the site as a wastewater treatment plant, with a range of existing infrastructure being transformed into unique features such as sunken gardens, landscape follies, and picnic shelters. It will include a large adventure play space and waterplay area, a youth hub with a basketball court, bush foods garden, and a catchment centre with a native plant nursery to support the environmental rehab of the Oxley Creek Catchment Association. New interpretive signage will also provide visitors with information on the past use of the site detailing the functions of the treatment plant. The Lord Mayor recently announced the construction of the district park was underway, and it's expected to open in early 2024. Chair, I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, is there further debate? Councillor Griffiths.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr Chair, I rise to also speak on the top, topic of the Oxley Creek, um, this particular corridor and the, uh, and the, uh, work that council is doing out there. Can I say, uh, to start, uh, I support the project, I was spending, uh, the 20, uh, no, it's 100 million over 20 years, uh, I think that is, uh, a worthy thing to do, um, in terms of, uh, Oxley Creek is the biggest catchment in our city, uh, it's also the most polluted catchment in our city, and it's the catchment that Brisbane City Council has ignored the most, uh, in, in the city. So we do need to spend money there, um, we need to be attracting money to clean up the creek, and to clean up, the, the creek is surrounded by large tracts of industrial land, it's been, um, been sandmined by, uh, by a number of, uh, people over the years, um, there's all sorts of activities, there's been meatworks along this, this particular creek too, but it is also the part of the city that we are opening up for major development. So this particular council and this administration will go, 'Have a look at what we're doing here, look down here, all eyes over here,' and we're looking at the corridor that, that particularly does flood, and saying, 'What a great job we're doing over here,' but don't look over here where we're clearing massive tracts of land. And it's interesting, today in the, uh, presentation, uh, for the Environment Committee, they were talking about trying to retain mature native trees, um, that was good, that was good for wildlife breeding and habit, habitation. We're allowing that to happen on a massive scale, out Polara Way, out Willawong Way, and further afield. So there's a double-edged sword here. This project is good, but the other side of the coin is, it gives developers, uh, an instant get-out, get-out jail-free if you clear land. And that's how this administration works. It's a look at the bright baubles over here, but ignore that over here. I just keep coming across this time and time again, this, this theme. It, this, so people understand, my ward is huge, so it goes from Princess Alexander Hospital, uh, over down to Willawong, and then up to, um, up to Anala. So it's a very large ward, and this is in one part of my ward, so even though it's being built in my ward, councillor Strunk will actually benefit many, many people in your ward, and, um, I believe they'll really love it and enjoy it. I do have a few concerns about it. When I went out and did the tour of the, um, the sewer works, and is, what we have to remember is, this is a sewer works. This is an old disused sewer work, so you go past the large cement containers that contained a whole lot of sewer, and that's what they're converting into playgrounds. So yes, it's sort of innovative, but there's a Nicky side to it as well. Now, they tell me the, uh, the land isn't contaminated, they tell me the land is fine out there, uh, and, and I, you know, I welcome this $20 million expenditure. And the Lord Mayor has been up there and getting media about what a great job he's doing, spending $20 million out sort of Anala Way, um, but we shouldn't remember, but we shouldn't forget that that pales into insignificance compared to the $80 million, $80 million for stage one for the inner-city project of Victoria Park. I, I think, uh, my concerns, obviously the sewer works and the staff advised me that they believe it will be safe and good to use, uh, that this will be a great facility. One of the benefits will be, will have OCA, Oxley Creek Catchment Association, uh, base there, uh, and they have been in search of a home for a long time. And they'll also be the tenants there, the anchor tenants, who will help keep the, uh, the site safe. I, I suppose I have been a bit disappointed that the, uh, project there isn't a guarantee that the, the site is fully lit, parts of the site will be lit, I'm told it will be locked at night time, I would expect the site to be fully lit. It's a public park, uh, certainly if it's in the, in a city, it would be lit properly. It seems to be some of these basic things we just fail to get right in the suburbs. The other thing that I really think we're failing to do is to link our, our carbon buying to, actually to our sustainability, um, uh, sustainability group. So why can't we take our carbon credits that we're buying and actually get our own sustainability group to, to produce and use those carbon credits? So the money's flowing within the city. I, I don't understand why that hasn't happened, why that isn't happening, and, uh, why we aren't sort of progressing further with that. In relation to the walk, I went out there, uh, and did that walk, um, done a couple of times, it's a brilliant walk. It, uh, goes through, um, kilometres of, uh, beautiful plat land that does flood very quickly, so there's, there's warning signals to tell people to leave if it's going to flood. It's a very beautiful, um, landscape, uh, but it's, um, and it's one that, that we are valuing and should, should value. It was interesting that, um, they did a number of, uh, digs with the local indigenous people, and they actually came up with Aboriginal artefacts that, um, demonstrate, uh, demonstrate that there had been trading of tools, uh, from, uh, central Australia to, to people who are living in the Brisbane area. So I think that's fascinating, and I think that's, um, that's some of the history that's still lying in our city. So yes, this is a good project, but don't get fooled by the politics behind this project. Don't get fooled by the greenwashing behind this project or the teal washing, um, there's, there's much more going on here, it's a, it's good, but it's a veneer for what is going on in our city by this Lord Mayor and this LMP administration. Thank you.
Further debate? Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and, Mr Chair, I rise to speak in support of this wonderful item that is presented through this report today. The Oxley Creek is a very important part of my ward, in fact, it's, it's almost like, um, a dividing line between two-thirds of, um, my ward, so it breaks up the direct connection between Polara and Algesta Parkinson, and it is a very interesting area because the Oxley Creek for many, many years was neglected, and particularly through the times and trials and tribulations that we've had with the water quality, it was a cause for concern in significant ways, and I do recognise that this project, through our former Lord Mayors and our current Lord Mayor, have been given priority, because we, on this side of the chamber, are looking at the sustainability, the long-term sustainability of our waterways, and also our environmental corridors, which are so very important connected to this project. Now, I would like to mention through you, Mr Chair, the importance of Warral Parkland, and Warral Parkland forms part of this Oxley Creek Transformation Project, and it was the first component, as is mentioned in the report, the first component of this transformation project. Warral Parkland has been extremely well-received by so many people because of the aspects it provides for families. Families are able to take their young children there, they are able to experience a bushland play, um, opportunity, and what is really interesting is that it, it came about in the floods last year, the way that the parkland equipment and the toilet facility and the way we set Warral Parkland up was designed was specifically to take into account the issues that we have with flooding. Now, my recollection is that Warral Parkland was probably one of the first parks to reopen post the flood because of the way the equipment had been constructed, to take into account that it was in close proximity to Oxley Creek, that there could be potential flooding, and what we did see was the recovery process was a lot quicker. Now, that is part of the sustainability, that is part of the long-term planning that has gone into this transformation project. There is a lot of work that has been going on, and I actually was very, very pleased last week, I think it was Thursday morning, and I'm not going to disclose the location because, um, I know that we have council officers who are protecting this very, very closely, but we actually have some endangered species down in that precinct, in that Oxley Creek corridor, and I was very, very privileged to actually see, just by coincidence, some of these species, and to know that the work that we are doing, are protecting these species, is absolutely wonderful, because to know that in the future, future generations will be able to know about these species, I, I just think it's, it's a great opportunity. There's, there are many different facets of this whole corridor, whether it's from cleaning up the waterways, whether it's protecting the environmental heritage of the trees, whether it's protecting species, whether it's giving our residents and their children that opportunity as families to have that bushland experience and that natural play opportunity. I think what has been done to date has been significant, it's been well-received by the community, and I know that the next stage with the Archerfield Wetlands area, it is just going to go ahead in leaps and bounds. This is a major investment in our city, in the green space of our southern suburbs, and I say thank you to all of the council officers and the team at the Oxley Creek Transformation Project for all of the work that they've been doing, because I know they've been working very diligently, and we deserve to give them our wholehearted support and show that be, behind the scenes, the work that they are doing is coming to fruition for our community in a great way. Thank you.
Thank you. Further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise briefly just to speak on the Archerfield Wetlands Parkland update. And I obviously am aware of the projects that are happening downstream, uh, along Oxley Creek as part of the Oxley Creek Transformation Project, uh, and it is good to see that the Archerfield project is, um, almost complete, hopefully, um, particularly that OCA will have a permanent, um, built, uh, facility, uh, for them. I guess, um, I, I don't think that councillor Owen necessarily understands what's happening, um, with respect to the Oxley Creek Transformation Project, or in fact, what's not happening. Last year, we were told that OCA, uh, that, uh, OCT would be releasing the Environmental Management Plan for Oxley Creek, it's not been released. It's the number one issue. Oxley Creek is the largest tributary of the Brisbane River, it is, um, highly toxic, it floods, it has terrible land use management, um, that feeds into it with industrial areas, agricultural areas, um, more and more residential being built, um, on the floodplain banks, um, that councillor Owen supports, uh, down near Polara. All of these intensified uses along Oxley Creek are having a detrimental impact. All of these intensified uses along Oxley Creek are having a detrimental impact on the health of the waterway corridor itself. We are yet to see any investment by OCT in the detailed regeneration and rejuvenation of the Oxley Creek corridor. There are some trees being planted, which goes on everywhere in my ward. There are bush care groups working their guts out in my ward, all the way along Oxley Creek. But we haven't seen the release of the Environmental Management Plan that was promised last year and has not been delivered. And it is absolutely critical that we see this plan so that we can be sure that all the necessary steps to protect the natural environment, to improve the health of the waterway corridor, and to make sure that the habitat is maintained and protected for all of the wildlife that lives along this corridor. And it's not a secret, I don't know what councillor Owen's talking about, but it's not a secret that Oxley Creek supports endangered species, including a huge number of birds and other types of wildlife. So I'm not sure why she thinks it needs to be a secret. But what I will say is the OCT team must release the Environmental Management Plan. Our community, it was the biggest single issue that this project was supposed to achieve, which is to rejuvenate Oxley Creek. That is not happening. What has happened to date is we've had one project at Larapinta, lovely playground for the kids, everyone likes it. We now have the Archerfield Wetlands Project, which again is facilities, footpaths, walkways, buildings for OCA. All of this is good. I don't have any problem with this. But you can't keep doing these projects without addressing the health of the creek. And that has not happened to date. I was awaiting that project, that Environmental Management Plan last year. It was told by Tracy that it was coming. It's not been delivered. Last year, they were supposed to start on the Graceville Project at the mouth of Oxley Creek. That's been delayed. It's not happening until after Archerfield is finished. At the rate this is going, we'll never get to the projects that have been listed. There are dozens of projects in my ward that haven't even started. So we need to see the Environmental Management Plan. It must be released to the community, must be released for consultation. It must make real and credible attempts to improve the health of the waterway corridor. The floods have a massive and adverse impact on the health of the creek and the waterway corridor. We must do better in identifying the warnings. There are gauges up and down Oxley Creek that warn about flood levels. I don't know why council wasn't looking at them, or the state government, or the federal government, but clearly no one looked at them. It is essential that we do more to build flood resilience into the management of Oxley Creek. And the Archerfield Project is a good one. It will rehabilitate a degraded area. But it is absolutely critical that the Environmental Management Plan for the Oxley Creek Transformation Project is immediately released. It is now a year overdue and our community deserves to know exactly how much will be invested into the remediation and rejuvenation of the natural waterway corridor and the biodiversity and habitat that sits alongside it.
Any further speakers? No further speakers, councillor Mackay.
Thanks, Chair. I welcome the positive feedback from the speakers and I acknowledge councillor Griffith's support of the project. I notice highlighted that this is a $20 million project and will, for the most part, fall or service to Labor wards. That's a great outcome. Further, I find it interesting that councillor Griffiths is promoting lighting up a wildlife corridor. I welcome that feedback and I'll note that for the record. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Marks, City Standards Committee Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 14th of February, 2023, be adopted.
Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Toomey that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 14th of February, 2023, be adopted. Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, the committee presentation was on road pavement maintenance. As the presentation explained, there are different road classifications depending on the type of road use. Several factors are considered when constructing a road, such as traffic loads, performance of pavement materials, strengthening of supporting foundations, and resistance to water ingress. As part of council's annual maintenance programme, interim repairs such as cracked ceiling and pothole and patching repairs are made to small scale in isolated road surface failures while awaiting full resurfacing. This presentation was a great overview of the work by road crews and the Ashfell and aggregate teams. There was one petition on the agenda last week and I am happy to leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there any further debate? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. Listen, I rise to speak in regards to the pavement maintenance to point out a couple of issues that have arisen over the last, I suppose, six months and one very recent in the last few days. I appreciate that it's a challenge to try to keep our roads up to a standard that, that the vehicles that are traversing the roads can do it safely and, and that the maintenance is not just a temporary patch, that actually will last a reasonable length of time. But in, in a couple of occasions or a couple of incidences, one being we've had an issue on Stapleton Road in the roundabout, just that first roundabout just above Johnson Road, which we have reported multiple times in the roundabout, which is really quite dangerous, actually, especially if you're driving a small vehicle, because your, your car can actually, and I've actually seen this myself personally, you can actually see the car coming around the roundabout, not so much the truck, but the car, almost drift, right? Because of the way the, the surface of that particular roundabout is, is at the moment. Now, they did do some remedial work on that a couple of months ago, but it didn't really improve things. And I was really sad to see that because we were constantly ringing up about that particular roundabout and, and the response that we got took time, which I can appreciate. But when they did fix it, it was not fixed to a standard that anyone in this chamber would be happy with. So I'll bet to that and, and one just-
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Point of order.
Yes, councillor.
Would councillor Strunk take a question, please?
Of councillor Strunk, will you take a question?
Councillor Strunk, are you aware that the particular roundabout, that's where the, I'm assuming that you're referring to the roundabout that approaches the bridge over the Logan Motorway on Stapleton Road, is that correct?
It's, it's, it's a bit back from it, yes.
Yeah, well, the, the actual roundabout on the edge of the Logan Motorway overpass is actually trans-urban.
I, I don't believe, I, I, thank you for the question, but, but that's, that's not the response we got when we, when we rung it through and then followed it up on many occasions. They did indicate it was something that they would send people out to undertake maintenance. So I appreciate the question, but that's not, that's not the impression we got when we rang up and then they took on, took on the job. Now, they may have passed it on to someone else, but I'm not aware of that. Anyways, the second issue, only a couple of days ago, I had a resident of Forest Lake contact me in regards to a claim that they were making about a pothole that they hit last May in Anala Avenue, just past the Dirac Tavern, going towards Anala. And they indicated that, that the pothole was, this was like 10 o'clock at night and it was raining and their MG, not, not the old MG, but the new MG, 2018, hit this pothole while she was driving, obviously, and did a considerable amount of damage. And I, I was just amazed, $2,600 worth of damage, lost two tyres, lost a rim, and then the suspension underneath had to be repaired as well or replaced, $2,600 worth. And her claim was knocked back. And I thought, well, wow. So going back to May last year, maybe this pothole started or maybe it was temporarily patched or whatever from the floods, the previous, you know, previous, you know, from last year in March, after the rain bomb or whatever. And, and, but I, I just thought, and then they said it was, it was, it was actually a knock, that the claim was knocked back because they, that the council didn't know that they had a problem with that pothole in that particular location. And I'm thinking, it doesn't make sense to me. And if you go out and have a look, it's, it's a considerable patch that was undertaken to remedial, remediate the situation. So, I mean, we, we talk about maintenance, I just don't think sometimes we get it right. And I think, you know, when, when we don't get it right, we try to undertake and work with council officers and work with, with the people that are going to remediate the problem, but sometimes that doesn't work. And I was really disappointed about the Stapleton Road one, more than any of us, because one of my team comes through, comes through that intersection on a daily basis. And, and she, she is the first one to have brought it to my attention. And as I say, she reported it multiple, multiple times and they eventually did get it fixed, but then when they fixed it, it just wasn't up to a standard I don't think anyone in this chamber would be, would agree to. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there any further debate? Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm more than happy to take on board councillor Strunk's feedback. I would be very keen to get an exact location. It would appear from the discussion we've had today that there's some difference of opinion about which roundabout councillor Strunk is referring to. I've Googled Stapleton Road, it's Forest Lake, it's Heathwood, it's obviously a very long road. The one that's come up has got near the Asahi Building. I don't know if that's the one we're referring to. So councillor Strunk, through you, Mr. Chair, I would be grateful if you could send me an email to my chair.standards email with the location, any correspondence you have from offices and any reference numbers you might have, then I could follow that up for you personally with the officers and find out what's going on in that space. As far as insurance claims go, they're actually sit under councillor Cunningham's portfolio. So if you wish to write to councillor Cunningham about that, I'm sure she'd be delighted to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, we now move to the vote on the City Standards Committee Report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 14th of February, 2023, be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 14th of February, 2023, be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And before moving to the committee report, I would just like to report on some very happy things that have been happening across Brisbane in the last week. And the first big shout out, of course, is to our wonderful River City Pride network. David Mann is amazing and facilitated a wonderful World Pride Q and A last week. And we had over 100 people in the room, which I thought was just totally amazing. And it's, it's important for us to understand that World Pride is a global LGBTQIA festival that has been staged since 2000 with cities around the world competing to host the event. And this year, it's being held in the southern hemisphere for the first time in Sydney to coincide with the 45th anniversary of Mardi Gras. So it was a great opportunity with festivities kicking off in Sydney for River City Pride to hold our event, of course, in one of our wonderful library rooms. We had a number of council officers who attended and it really was extra special. There was an opportunity to raise some money for the Open Doors Youth Service and I'm pleased to advise that they raised $750 for this very important charity. It's events like these that reaffirm the importance of the River City Pride and the impact that this group has, not just on working lives, but also on the personal lives of our council employees. It's important also to recognise that River City Pride and the great work that they do is just part of council's broader commitment to fostering a workplace culture where diversity is valued, inclusion is intrinsic, and where people feel they can bring their whole selves to work regardless of their background, ability or circumstance. I commend River City Pride on this event. It was a privilege to be invited and to continue to support River City Pride and inclusion in council. Another fantastic event that happened this week was Gladys Smith Turn 101. Gladys lives at my wonderful Wall Widows Apartments in New Farm. And so we had a great afternoon sitting in the gardens before she shook off the next day, which was her actual birthday, to the Brunswick Hotel. Where else would you spend your 101st birthday? Gladys is quite amazing. We are all very disappointed that she's got to wait to 105 to get a letter from the King. She's already got the one from the Queen, but, so that was a little disappointing for her, but she's a fantastic human being, much loved by all and knows how to have a good time. So that was a great event. I also want to give a shout out to Vox Alis. They launched their 2023 season and it was a fantastic event at St Andrews Uniting Church. Now, Vox Alis is, has been formed by Matthew Schwartz and Camilla Lopez, and they are the co-founders of this fantastic opportunity. It's emerging, it's an emerging organisation that is dedicated to presenting outstanding performances of song and opera. And there was one, Emma Nightingale, who did actually sing like a nightingale and is known to councillor Landers, who is a great fan. So it was a great, it was a great event to attend their launch. I encourage everyone in the chamber to go online and look at the amazing performances that they will be presenting through this year and, and of course, to support our emerging artists wherever they may be. I also was thrilled and as the patron of the Nash Theatre, the New Farm Nash Theatre, I popped along to see the Lux Radio Presents The Thin Man on Saturday night. Now, there's opportunity for everyone in the chamber to pop along and see this fantastic performance. They'll be there until March 11th. They perform on a Friday and a Saturday night. And it's a wonderful community theatre that I really encourage everybody to look at what's happening in their own wards and to get behind some of these fantastic opportunities. Finally, I want to give a bit of a wrap up to Briz Asia. Briz Asia Festival has now wrapped for another year. And on Sunday, we mark the conclusion of 19 jam-packed days of celebrating and embracing Asian culture. The Briz Asia Festival is an annual highlight on Brisbane's cultural calendar and just one of the many ways in which we continue to grow Brisbane, a culture where cultures connect. Sharing in these cultural celebrations like Briz Asia allows our communities to grow closer and stories to be shared between those of all backgrounds. Briz Asia Festival gives us the chance to connect through culture, to learn from one another, share ideas, make new friends and build an identity that is culturally inclusive, creatively innovative, socially cohesive and economically vibrant. And I want to say a big thank you to Anthony and Jen Garcia from Sounds Across Oceans, who put together another outstanding programme. And I think it's a great tribute to them that the crowds just keep growing and growing every year and it's a great festival and really want to say a big thank you to them. Now, moving to our committee meeting from last week, we had a presentation on seniors' creative programmes. And everybody that was in the committee had a great time listening to our, our Creative Communities Manager, who gave us an update on the many, many activities that we'd had through the years. So in 2022, council's Creative Communities Team delivered several programmes for Brisbane seniors, including the seniors' suburban concerts during seniors' month, the Lord Mayor's seniors' cabaret and the Lord Mayor's seniors' Christmas parties. These are events that are inclusive and accessible for all senior residents of Brisbane to enjoy with their family and friends. And the Lord Mayor's seniors' cabaret will be celebrating its 10-year anniversary in 2023, so a great milestone for them. The seniors' suburban concert programme had its most successful year to date. And the Lord Mayor's senior Christmas party, which of course are so popular, was a rockin' Christmas and more than 200,000 seniors have attended the parties over the last 22 years. So really thrilled to, to have presented that, that committee report last week. And I want to say a big, big thank you to all of the council officers who are involved in those fantastic programmes. And it couldn't happen without you. We really appreciate all of the work that you do and all of the work that you do towards making our seniors in Brisbane feel included. So thank you very much. I'll leave debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate. Now move to the vote on the report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee-
Committee meeting held on Tuesday the fourteenth of February twenty twenty-three be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday fourteenth of February twenty twenty-three be adopted. Councillor Cunningham, no? Any debate? We now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I just flagged that this is an e-petition. The actual signatures to the e-petition aren't attached to this. It's just the cover page. Normally, they are attached. So I just want to flag, this is what I've been given, but I think there might be some pages missing. It's a petition on behalf of Yorongar residents calling on council to revitalise and rejuvenate the drain and waterway corridor running through Yorongar.
Thank you. Any further petitions? No further petitions. Can I have a motion for receipt of the petition, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by the deputy mayor that the petition as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. General Business, councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? No one rising to their feet. Are there any matters of general business? Councillor Adaman is first up.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I rise to give an update on activities occurring in the Poole and Vale Ward. The commencement of the twenty twenty-three school year has seen the introduction of a school zone at Brookfield Road, specifically to provide greater safety for students arriving and departing the Brookfield State School every day. Securing this school zone was not cut and dried. Because it didn't have direct frontage to Brookfield Road, it wasn't automatically entitled to the benefits of zones such as forty kilometres an hour during school hours, a dedicated crossing and crossing supervisor. But I wasn't going to take no for an answer. And I thank the Infrastructure Chair councillor Wines for helping me wade through the state's bureaucratic red tape to have TMR understand that there was a special case for a school zone there. And I'm pleased to advise the zone is working well and that a safer environment for children attending the Brookfield State School is now in place. Chair staying with Brookfield, over the past couple of years, I've been asked by local residents if council would consider a missing link path on Rafting Ground Road, Brookfield, near the intersection with Boscombe Road, past Brookee Traders to connect to the existing path near Mogel Creek Bridge on Brookfield Road near the showgrounds. The existing path is well used by students, walkers, joggers, store customers, and does become very slippery when wet. This will be a significant project, but I know from the feedback I've received already from residents that this will be much appreciated by the Brookfield community. And I'm hopeful that work on this path can be undertaken in the first half of this year. Chair, as my colleagues on this side of the chamber will attest, one of the highlights of our role as councillors each year is to preside at ceremonies where residents are conferred with Australian citizenship. On Australia Day this year, we welcomed seventy new Australians at ceremonies conducted at Kenmore and Bellberry. To see the joy on people's faces after having taken the oath and received their certificates after the long journey to attain Australian citizenship was very satisfying. My thanks to the respective rotary clubs of Kenmore and Karana Downs, Bellberry, for organising two wonderful and moving ceremonies. Chair, while on Australia Day, I have written to four residents of the Poole and Vale Ward congratulating them on being recipients of twenty twenty-three Australia Day awards. And I want to publicly acknowledge them. Mrs. Mary Seafried of Mogel, for significant services to equestrian sports. Mrs. Jill Costello, OAM of Colo, for services to community help. Mr. Selwyn Sinethamby, OAM of Kenmore, for services to the community, particularly through the church. And Mr. John Richard Tilly, OAM of Mount Crosby, for service to veterans. Chair sadly, I have to finish my award report on a negative note. And it's another case of being disappointed but not surprised when it comes to the ongoing neglect by the state Labor Government to the needs of the western suburbs. The latest example is the rejection of my petition to the Queensland Parliament calling for Translink to increase its service coverage area to enable the provision of public transport, which is bus services, to the western part of the Poole and Vale Ward, in particular Karana Downs and Mount Crosby. I would have thought that sixteen hundred signatures supporting the petition and a growing population in those areas should have given Transport Minister Mark Bailey something to at least consider. But unfortunately, it didn't. In his response, Minister Bailey said in part, the suburbs of Karana Downs, Mount Crosby, Anstead, Colo, and, excuse me, Lake Manchester, have very low levels of density and only a small proportion of the population lives in close proximity to roads, which would support bus services. Chair, if Minister Bailey was to venture out of George Street and visit these communities, instead of blindly accepting what he's told by bureaucrats, he might see otherwise. As I said earlier, this is disappointing, particularly after the same minister announced in November, the state government's decision to walk away from improving traffic congestion at the Kenmore Roundabout, excuse me, and last week said he had no intention, sorry, had no intention of flood proofing Colleges Crossing. But Chair, be assured, the Shrima Council will continue to keep the pressure on the state to meet the needs of all Brisbane residents irrespective of where they live. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further general business? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on a couple of events and also on a development application that was recently approved. The first is the Forest Lake markets. And these kicked off on the Oval where the WASP Rugby Union, Junior Rugby Union Club occupies and leases. And it started probably around about October, November last year. And I have mentioned it before, but I just wanted to give another shout out to the fact that it's really starting to grow. We had another, and they usually, they usually fine with markets is the first one back from in the new year, isn't always as good as the, as the last, the last one, which was at Christmas time. But that wasn't the case. It was actually better, better numbers, better number of stalls, more food trucks, live entertainment now, which is, which has been part of the, which hasn't been part of the, the markets up until, up until February. But it's, they, on a Friday night, which again, I said, I think the last time I talked about this, I didn't think Friday nights would have been such a great idea. But it turns out Friday night's a great idea. And others have told me that that happens elsewhere as well. Anyways, the next one will be the tenth of March, between five and eight P M., which is really great. The fact that, of course, it's cooler that time of the day. And of course, the nice thing about the Oval is that it's got, it's all lit, which is really great for the, great for the stall holders, whether you're bumping in or really bumping out actually, because you usually bump in under, under the sun. Anyways, congratulations to Martin, the president of WASP, and Veronica, who's the treasurer. They are really kicking a lot of goals in regards to trying to fundraise for the, for the WASPs and, and build up the, build up their numbers again. The second thing, the second item or the second event, of course, is our fortnight at, we're now calling it Jazz at the Lake. We're now calling it Live Music at the Lake, because the genre for the musicians are not just jazz. It's other, other types of music as well that they play. They have a lot of guest, guest singers and musicians that hop in with them for that, for that, every fortnight. And it runs from, in the winter, from two to five P M. And in summer, of course, from three till six. Beautiful setting, just overlooking the lake on the lake stage. And, and the numbers last week were actually probably better than we've seen for a long time, which is really, really encouraging. The last item I want to speak about is a development application that was, was recently approved for three, subdivision of three blocks into, from one block into three, which is at number five, the Espernard at Forest Lake. Now, this was a, this was an area that was to be developed to a six and seven-storey building, over fifty-five's building, going back a few years ago. And council appealed the, the, well, I should say, the developer appealed council's decision not to allow that. And then it started earnest in regards to the, the community becoming involved in the grassroots campaign to try to stop it. Council went off to the P and E Court after a great outcry from the, from the locals with petitions and, and a number of petitions, a number of the locals actually joined the, joined the court case as well to give their evidence and, and be part of that court case. Sadly, it was upheld. And after a council spent about two hundred thousand dollars and, which was, which was a great effort. And I have to, you know, I have to say that, that the council really backed, backed the, backed to try to stop that development happening right on the lake, which would have ruined the character of the whole Jenny Walk village, which was right around, we're halfway around the lake. But what happened was the COVID happened, and the developer wasn't able to commence, commence the work in a timely fashion. And eventually, they decided not to go ahead with that particular development and sold the, sold the land to a developer from down, down, I think it was in Melbourne or somewhere like that. Anyways, they decided that it is low residential, which it still is, by the way, on any map you want to look at, no matter what the P and E Court says you can do with it. And, and so they, they decided to buy the block of land and subdivide it into three four-hundred metre, square metre blocks. And it's now going to be housing, which is the character of the village. Not going to have that god-awful monolith overshadowing even the lake stage for that matter. And it's just, it was a really great outcome for the community. And but the approval for the subdivision or, or to make that one block into three only came through about a week ago. And we were so happy to see that. And the Forest Lake Action Group, who were the pioneers behind, trying to stop that development, they were very, they were very elated, as you can probably imagine. Thank you, Chair.
Any further general business? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly, I want to speak on flood planning and flood management in relation to Oxley Creek and the Brisbane River. It is almost one year since the floods hit in February and March twenty twenty-two. And as we come up to the anniversary, it is timely to reflect upon the progress that has been made, both to recover and to learn the lessons of the second major flood in my time as the councillor, but also to make sure that things are better the next time there is another natural disaster such as a flood. Because there will be another major flood. We live in a city that is essentially dominated by a river and creek system that is, that carries a huge amount of water, and flooding will happen again in the future. Now, over the past year, I've been undertaking a number of file requests, requests for information, questions to the CEO, and seeking information about flood planning and flood warnings. One of the major failures of the two thousand and twenty-two floods was the failure of all levels of government to engage in timely warnings before the flood hit. And the Lord Mayor wants to dodge around this issue when I've asked him about it in previous weeks last year and again today. It's very clear that there is no information coming about Oxley Creek or any preparedness for Oxley Creek, specifically when it comes to flood planning and flood warnings. Now, Oxley Creek is a leading indicator of flooding that happens in Brisbane. Oxley Creek flooded a day to a day and a half before the Brisbane River flooded. But council did not see it. They did not listen to me. At ten twenty-six on Saturday, I advised council and the Lord Mayor personally that Oxley Creek was flooding and that homes in Oxley and other parts of the ward were flooding. And I continued to provide this advice to the LDCC throughout Saturday and Sunday. By the time that council issued one flood warning on Sunday night in that torrential rain, I thought people in my area would die. There was no warning. Police had to wade through hip-deep water. They had to take canoes. They put themselves at risk because no one provided any warning. Now, what I don't understand is why the flood modelling system does not provide for specific warnings for Oxley Creek. There are indicators, flood warning indicators, all the way down Oxley Creek, right from outside the Brisbane City Council area down to near the mouth of the creek. And it is shocking to me that no warnings were given. One of the documents that I got from council in my file request last year was the warnings issued. And the only warnings issued at all prior to the flood and during the flood were about the Mural Avenue underpass and the rocky waterholes. Now, in heavy rain, they go under. In heavy rain, they go under. I live less than a kilometre, and my ward border is less than a kilometre from that intersection. It used to be in my ward. And those warnings did not come to me as the local councillor. So if I'm not getting them, who else isn't getting them? And I've been signed up to council's early warning system forever. So there is a real problem that the Lord Mayor cannot continue to ignore. We must have a proper flood warning system for Oxley Creek. We must have a protocol in place to issue warnings to people who live along that corridor, because it floods in advance of the Brisbane River. Now, earlier today, the Lord Mayor made the point of saying, we have a whole of Brisbane response to flood planning. Great. But that's not the way that flooding happens. It happens in some areas earlier and other areas later. The flood planning has to be responsive to the impacts of the natural environment and how flooding occurs. So the Lord Mayor has made it clear to me over numerous meetings that he is not prepared to act on this matter. So I will be.
Thank you. Any further general business? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, I just wanted to give a brief update on some of the epic events that have been happening in my ward over the last week. Now, it kicked off on Saturday with the Drive to Health poker run. Now, if you're into classic cars or sports cars, this was the event for you. I was driving a nineteen fifties black and white Impala, and we had a lot of fun. Now, I'm personally not a massive classic car lover, but the rev of, I know, Shane, but the rev of that engine had my little people in the back squealing. So they had the best day. I think that there was a few quotes of, oh, my God, can we buy one? No. So if you've never heard of a poker run, participants are given directions to designated checkpoints where they pick up a playing card. After five checkpoints, you have a hand, and thus the best hand wins. Kicking off at Just Poppy's Burger Shop at River Hills, we were given our directions that led us all across the western suburbs, even out to your ward, councillor Toomey. We had a lot of fun, but behind all of that, there was the method to the madness. And the reason why we were doing it was to raise money for a very worthy local charity called Trek to Health. Now, Trek to Health is a mental health charity that supports our first respondents, including the more traditional methods and also taking them out and enjoying the local environment. So they together raised up close to nine thousand dollars for this one event. And I want to do a shout out to those involved. So that was Lisa Bailey, who coordinated the event, Damian Lacy and Lacy Plumbing, Mark and Poppy from Just Poppy's, and Remax Ignite for their generous sponsorship. Now, it didn't end there. On Sunday, we celebrated the Trung Sisters ceremony with our wonderful Vietnamese Women's Association. Now, despite the story being celebrated over a thousand years, this is one truly inspiring story. A story of bravery, a story of determination, a story of courageous leadership, a story of two women who wanted freedom and sovereignty for their country and were prepared to risk their lives for the better future for others. The Trung Sisters, Trung Trak and Trung Ni, were Vietnamese women's who led a rebellion against the Chinese rule in the first century A.D. It's hard to comprehend how these two sisters rallied an army of eighty thousand fighters. No technology, no social media, nothing but a clear vision driven by the love for their country. They were able to mobilise and lead a diverse group of people from different backgrounds, ages and They were able to mobilise and lead a diverse group of people from different backgrounds, ages and genders, creating environment where there was inclusive, that was inclusive and empowering. These sisters managed to overpower the foreign invaders and gain independence for Vietnam. And whilst they were only able to hold on for a short period of time, these women are truly celebrated in our Vietnamese culture. The strength and courage of these amazing women continues today. And I want to say a huge thank you to May Chu Nguyen for her ongoing support and her community who organised this important event. Now, finally, I want to go to the final thing that happened, which was on Sunday night, which was a fundraiser for Gabby Johnson. Now, remember this name, Gabby Johnson. She will be a phenomenal athlete at the twenty thirty-two Olympics. I have no doubt. This gorgeous young woman is eighteen and a passionate triathlete, and she's about to compete in the junior world titles in New Zealand. Now, she is not just fit, but she is so mentally strong, this young woman. She graduated from Bridgerdean College last year, and instead of going to schoolies, she got on her bike with her dad and cycled to Sydney. This woman is unreal, and we wish her all the very best for her efforts in the triathlon and world juniors. So good luck, Gabby. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further general business? No further general business. I declare the meeting closed.